For us to remove a restriction on the sale of NIPS or liquor in a certain format for Liquor Junction in one general way. And a request to approve the change in Sunday hours for liquor stores generally, as well as renewal or approval of the liquor licenses that's done annually. We'll then move to a hearing on the fiscal fifteen classification plan and chat regards proposed charter changes. We'll then move to executive session with regard to joint departmental topics. With that, my only liaison report is, the board's been quite busy with regard to town meeting, which will, it's fourth in on Thursday. It's been a, I think, a productive, although tiring, agenda. And we're finally getting the review of the zoning rules that have been worked on so hard by so many people. And I think from my standpoint, although it's taken a while to get going, the quality and the number of comments have been what I would hope. They're instructive, they are generally error-based or oversights, and I think people are now starting to see the energy and quality that was put into the document. So with that, I'll turn to my right. Dan, any comments?
I have no further report.
Todd?
Since we last met, I've attended two Board of Health committee meetings. They have been working pretty conscientiously over the last six weeks or so on a strategic plan, a five-year plan, for evaluating where they are, where they would like to be. Last night, they are at what I would call the final draft of that. It started with a, not last night, but this process started with a public meeting that also invited related and interested parties from Winchester Hospital and Hallmark and among others. And Sanborn Place was part of that. It was about twenty-five people that offered input. That was all collated by a facilitator that they received a grant to help them. And I think that they're, they've boiled a lot of work down to five or six pages and a lot of various attached appendix items. And I think that we're going to be hearing from them in January. I think, Bob, it's probably going to be in your hands. I'd be surprised if it's not in your hands, but early to middle of next week. And the meeting for the early childhood space has been postponed. I think they just had too many things going on at once. Dan and I will be attending that on December fourth. And that's really all I have for right now.
Good. Thank you, John. Kevin, any comments?
Yeah, well, John's leaving at one I'm sure he left it for me to hit. So John Halsey and myself attended the Veterans' Day breakfast back on the eleventh. It was down at the Pleasant Street Center. They had a good crowd. They had, I don't know if I get this number because I think it's higher than that. But they said they had, oh, they felt over a hundred people rotating in and out.
Oh, I believe there was a hundred people in and out for breakfast on, and then maybe way over to the-
For that one hour and a half period of time that they had.
It's pretty impressive.
Yeah, it was. It was nice to see. There was a good mix of families, veterans there, wives of previous veterans. And then they set up, they have, it's really nice. They have the Boy Scouts set up right out on the patio area of Pleasant Street Center. They march them up Haven Street crossover into the parking area right on the other side of Main and then up to the common area where they had a couple of keynote speakers. One of them, Bill, do you remember the major's name?
I don't.
I don't have it off the top of my head. I forgot to write it down. But Frank put on a very nice morning. Really was very, very respectful. They had a class from, I think it was Joshua Eaton. I forget which grade came up. They all, they all wrote their own poem. And they were really good.
Third grade. Third grade.
It was a third grade?
Yeah.
They were, they were excellent. Wrote their own poem.
I think there was a dozen of them.
Yeah, it was really nice. Really nice.
It was really kind of cute.
Yeah. So it was, it was a really nice ceremony. It was nice to see. It was good crowd participation, too. I think other than just the parents of third graders that were there. So it was a nice, nice crowd for people out there. The major with the, is he with reserves?
National Guard.
National Guard? Okay.
Weekend warriors.
What's that?
Weekend warriors.
Well, he's, he's a Reading resident. Grew up in Reading, now in school in Reading. He gave a really nice speech as well. So it was a, it was a nice morning, very good tribute to the veterans here in town and everywhere, so.
Yeah, and he was a weekend warrior, but he actually has done, done, I think, three tours in the Middle East as well.
I thought it was four maybe, right?
Yeah, four. I mean, he was very impressive and it was kind of nice. He, you know, he started his speech by, you know, identifying himself as a Rocket. I think he actually graduated with one of my daughters. So it was very nice to see him back with his family.
Yeah.
You know, after a career in the military.
Anything else? That's all I have. Good. With that, anyone here tonight that would like to provide public comment? Mr. Brown?
A follow-up on the Veterans' Day. I don't know if they are aware or not, but both zones are in cemeteries. The bench at Chalston and the F store at, I mean, whatever. And they come up nice. Again, Frankie did a hell of a job. And we both had to sit down and make sure the emblems were in the right order. We did screw up once, but we were real tight. There is a, there is a military protocol. And Kevin, I don't know if you noticed the front of the brochure that Frankie put up. Well, and I rag it once in a while.
I, I think you told me about this.
Yeah. The Marine had his weapon on the wrong shoulder. And that's very unusual for them. The five military branches, they are perhaps the sharpest coming from Air Force men. And John, I do appreciate that, but it's the inter-military rivalry that we have.
Well, I noticed that it was an Air Force man calling a Marine out about a Marine doing it wrong, so.
Well, you get to rag them once. Because my favorite thing with Frankie is I keep telling him, I served three years and the show's a trip when he never did, so.
And then I believe he went on to, to back up his, his own tours right after that, I believe.
It's nice to see the rivalries don't end with your, with the formal service.
We all showed, and we all showed.
Very good. Bob, any comments? Your amplifyers? The cultural group that some of you attended was just meeting tonight. I just got back from that. In a very quiet way, it's a very energized, small core right now. I didn't, I wasn't able to go to two meetings ago when they got the final report delivered, so I only saw it secondhand. But I think a couple of years from now, they're going to be a force to be reckoned with. They're just plotting their strategy of how to coalesce and how to get sort of a branding and how to get out there with a name. They may well go as far as, you know, fundraising and driving towards their own building. I don't really know. That's, that's probably the highest goal we could achieve. Virtually every cultural organization in town is tied into this somehow or another, some more enthusiastically than others. But none are in opposition. It's all, it's an idea of marketing, if you will, writing as a cultural destination. The inventory the consultant puts together will stagger as to how much is in this town. Oh yeah, that one, I heard of that. Oh yeah, I heard of that one. And you don't really think until you see it all in one location how much we actually have.
Do you care to guess how many individual groups are represented?
Hundreds. That's a lot. And interestingly, not all of them knew about each other.
So they have a problem.
So, you know, there is a marketing issue.
Yeah.
And unlike maybe some businesses, there's really not a lot of rivalry there. You know, artists as a group, let's just speak to them because Reading Art was there. They're all thrilled that all of them get publicity.
Sure.
You know, it's more, you know, the rising tide will lift all boats kind of approach. So I think you'll be hearing about them. And they described some efforts to get out there in front of the public in the next year or two at some events. Do it in a cohesive way, which that's what will be impressive. Any one of them could go out to any one like the Fall Street Fair and have a booth, no big deal. To have eight booths together and to have them all there with representatives from twenty-five or fifty organizations with a brand name, that'd be pretty powerful.
Can you guess that if it's hundreds of groups, do you think the head count represents?
The head count that's interested in this goes well beyond Reading people. So it's already reached out probably to fifty miles in every direction. It's impossible to know. There are communities on the shore, on the shore that do this, the seashore, Salem, Beverly, the area. There's not a lot going on inland. So the fact that Reading is interested in this has really spread like wildfire. So, you know, again, we'll see kind of where it goes, what it does. But typically, when Reading, the community of Reading does something, it kind of does it top-notch. So don't be surprised if this turns out something like this. I just wanted to remind you that we did add a meeting in January. We were trying to add a meeting in December. That just didn't work out. I believe that only three of you are available for the December second meeting. We can confirm that as we get closer to the date. We can close the warrant for January either December second or December ninth. It doesn't really matter. But you do need to vote on December ninth, so if you want to close it, say when you can. I don't think there's any harm in closing the warrant on the second with only three people here. You saw a draft of the articles. There's really just the permanent building committee and the charter and then a bunch of housekeeping things if there's anything to do with money, which I don't know of any right now, other than we hope to have the pay-in-class results. FY sixteen budgets are underway. They're complex. You know, FinCom's guidance of two and a half doesn't really allow us to add much, if anything. Just kind of go into survival mode. But different departments are challenging themselves to rethink the way they do things and rearrange, if you will. Because we have to, we have to assume, at least I would assume, there won't be an override for many years. And you have to build the core of your services with that in mind. But then you have to build it so it's scalable, so if all of a sudden money falls out of the sky, you can have a list of this is what I do with.
Punch list.
And in the past, I'll say, Community Services as one example, a whole bunch of things just kind of tossed in there because it's a bit like, you know. As it is now, we have three-quarters of the employees in there are part-time. So whatever the reason is, someone comes to Community Services that wants something, the odds are of you finding that person here and not her. So we're kind of looking at all the models and trying to figure out what's the best long-term service the way we have them for all four of us. You'll have a busier budget season this year than it's been in several years, partly for a financial challenge and partly really to a longer-term point with, again, the idea of, it is my discussion next year. So for now, we've just scheduled two January meetings, but, you know, as John has mentioned, and I know I've talked to the council on aging, there's real interest in the volunteer community going forward and describing to you personally what it is they see that's short on. This is what we do well, but these are the things we're not doing. And I think it's important to hear that idea. It's possible that two nights of budgets may not be enough. We may have to have other, just have to play that by year. On January twenty-seventh, I'd like to have a much advertised private road discussion. There's two kinds of private roads that are going to come in front of you. One is by accident, one is on purpose. The by accident ones are the developers that left town, left money behind perhaps, and never fully did all the paperwork. They were supposed to have a public road. And many of the residents, if some area of ground would end, are just now finding out twenty years later that it's not a public road because paperwork was not completed. And they find out when the road starts to wear down and it needs repairs. So twenty years is difficult. My own opinion, and we'll have Town Council at that meeting, is their situation is quite different than someone who consciously lives on a private road. They knew they bought a house on a private road, and that was a conscious choice that someone made long ago. In the past, we've treated both the same, although the second, the first group is a little bit newer. Passports have had very high standards to bring a road up to snout if you were in Reading to become a public road with granite curving and the whole nine yards. That was relaxed within the last couple of years. I know down at Woodland Road, I think it is, Woodland Street, Woodland Road, behind the baseball park, there were six houses and they relaxed the standards a little because there was no need to have a granite curb on cul-de-sac. So that's, that's something you'll need to think about and we'll certainly start the discussion that night. I think, again, with Town Council's advice, I'd like to break those into the two types. And I'd like to try to bring the accidental private roads to an April town meeting article to accept them as public under whatever terms you decide. But that will require us to have a lot of months to work on from January, late January to late February in the morning places. So we'll see how that works. I get a call probably about once a month from some of these people saying, when are we going to have the meeting? Because again, a lot of people just found out. They had no idea that they're on a private road. They certainly didn't intend it. And it's a very amicable conversation. They just want to know what's the process.
Sure.
And I said, well, I think the process for you is probably a little more straightforward than the process for someone else. But I had additions in my office from two years ago from Peter that fifty or sixty people have signed saying, we want this to be a public road.
You mentioned earlier that in some cases, escrowed funds have been left behind?
Yeah. Finding one should be a challenge. Not very many of them, but yeah, there's bonds that have been forfeited. Their government's there, so helping the bank accounts. And that'll be part of the discussion. I think that's all. We have a full agenda tonight. With that, after no other comments, we'll move directly to our first discussion item, which is presentation from RMLD regarding the LED program.
Public comment?
Sorry?
Very good.
We did public comment earlier.
Okay, I missed it.
Colleen?
Good evening.
Good evening.
Thank you for having me.
Thank you for coming.
With me I have the manager of the Integrated Resources, Jane Pranta, and one of our project engineers in engineering, Bonnie Smith. They can help me out. So thanks for allowing RMLD to present an update to some of the projects that we're working on. The RMLD is under its new responsive communication campaign. We're looking at providing similar types of project updates at least twice a year through the selectment of each of the four towns. And/or as necessary and/or as requested. So if you're looking for having an update, you can just let me know. Otherwise, you can hear it twice a year at least and we'll try to do something similar to this. The RMLD is transitioning, as I mentioned at the town meeting, from a reactive type of operation to a proactive planning operation. An organizational reliability study are critical to establishing long-term planning to ensure that RMLD remains competitive and successfully meets the ongoing challenges of the electric industry. And I think I had mentioned that the electric industry is changing in a major way in two thousand seventeen and eighteen where capacity and transmission in this near zone, Boston area, will be implemented on all of us. And rates will increase. Power supply itself is a pass-through. And recently, we unbundled our rates. Did a RCTV presentation that you can all watch, Jane and I sat there and explained how the rates are bundled. And the reason why I did that is so that now each of the line items matches other IOUs so that you can see what is power supply, what is operations and maintenance. And it's, there's no longer integrating into base rates. So it's clear. What's a pass-through? What is the operating cost of this? And we're doing the budget to actual on that.
What's the first bill you'd expect to benefit from that? What's the first consumer statement that we have that unbundling?
That came out in July. The first unbundled bill is in July. So if you look at the bill, if you can look at the previous one, if you have any questions, you can go on RCTV. We go line item by line item. And we also had some canned questions and stuff. If there's any other questions, you can call over, talk to Dean, whoever. But once you unbundle the bill, we're trying to take the six-year plan and you want to bundle that so that you can have a different line item, so that we can make sure every single month where we are. Because we never want to happen what happened when we first got hired, which was an assumption of growth that didn't occur that was, you know, anticipated previously. So we want to make sure that we're doing analysis monthly. And also to be able to give each of the towns and schools what they can expect of their subsequent budget. And we're analyzing that monthly because the electric system is becoming very volatile. I mean, it's ever-changing since nineteen ninety-eight during deregulation, but it seems like the FERC and the NEXO, they just, they just keep making more rules and, you know, it's, it's becoming costly. And they want to build a lot more capacity and transmission to get to this area. In this presentation, I'll go over our mission statement. I'm going to just go briefly over the organizational and reliability study. Brian's going to touch on the LED streetlight program thus far. Brian will also touch on the tree trimming. And Jane will come up and speak to the charging station and our commercial rebate programs. The RMLD is committed to providing excellent customer service, including the premium-priced electricity as a result of diligence in the areas of power supply risk management, system reliability and flexibility, and overall business efficiency. You can't really see these numbers.
That's because they're so small.
Because they're so small. Ranked at one of the lowest in the state, what we're showing here is most of the contiguous towns like PB and Middleton. We have N-Star and National Grid in almost all categories where ranked as one of the lowest. PB, as you know, has some generation, so they're low in a couple of them. But pretty much of all the municipals in the state, in the other IOUs, we're right around about the third lowest, which we intend to keep that way.
What do you think, what would you say is the reason we're able to get efficiencies beyond, beyond the other municipals? What's the?
My personal opinion? I, I think that utilities that have power supply analysts that put it into portfolios and that are structuring the portfolios and watching the market, putting the diversity into the portfolio. Like if you're buying hydro, you want run-of-the-river, low-risk. And their job is to make sure that you're getting the lowest-priced power supply. And they do a lot of work to make sure that it's, it's competitive. And you have prices come in from, we just did a whole price thing. Prices come in, they have to be locked in with an hour, and they're pretty competitive. And you make sure that our guarantees are in line. And you lock in some really solid markets. But you, you also have long-term, you know, Niantz gas prices that you're following. It can get quite complicated as you would expect like someone who follows the stock market or stock, you know, it's, it's similar. But we have strategies that, you know, lock in, if it goes between this and this, you know, you'll lock it in, you can lock in tranches. We do a layering and laddering type approach. Jane can explain it a little bit more. But that diligence, most of the utilities, or I'd say that the majority of the utilities that have power supply groups that specialize in this niche-type thing, that handle both retail and wholesale, generally will have the lowest prices in the state. National Grid and, you know, they pay to stock owners. Our power supply is completely passive. We don't make any money off of that. National Grid, because they're not deregulated, they go every six months and they buy power contracts because they weren't able to keep their long-term contracts like us. So they'll reconcile ahead and reconcile back and then project in ahead. So there's changes every, you know, remembering in May. Their recent increase was thirty-four point something percent. Whereas, you know, I know that was the Ryan Bush tour, but that was four percent and one point three percent over the last two or three years, which was still pretty significant and low. But we, I want to make sure that there's no surprises like that again. I mean, that, that was more what was upsetting, I think, than it was that the increase was, was normal. But anyways, about third, third in the state, and we need to keep it that way. I'm going to go over the reliability indices just a little bit. SADY, KEDY, I wrote on the right-hand side of SADY, it's the total duration of customer interruptions over the total number of customers served. So it's a different way of evaluating outages. And in the case of SADY and, and KEDY, we are well below the national and regional averages. And we want to stay that way. That will start to creep up because of weather, because of maintenance, it has a number of factors. But right now, regional and national. And these are interesting liability statistics, and we put them out there for political purposes and to share. But generally, what, what we use these for is we're tracking what's causing the outages so that we can, we can fund the money into areas. Like if we find that it's the majority of the trees that are causing it, or maybe we're having a significant amount of fuse, fuses that are blowing, we track and trend what's actually occurring so that we can target to fix those areas. So we're using it internally in engineering to improve reliability. And then we turn around and we try to be, you know, incomparable to the rest of the country by using these standardized indices. We collect just about every blink, or a lot of the large IOUs, they may not collect it for a minute or five minutes because they're trying to show good numbers. We're not really trying to figure out what's happening so that we can fix it.
What was the total number of interruptions in those two charts? Those are averages, so they're hard to figure out.
Are there minutes, number of minutes that are out?
Well, if the KEDY is, is minutes per interruption and the other one is minutes per customer served, but I wonder the number of interruptions? Just curious.
Can you go to the next slide?
Yeah, I'm going to go to the next slide, the, maybe under total number of customer interruptions over total number of customers served under safety.
If you look at that lower right-hand box and add a follow, it's not going to shoot at the answers.
Can you send us this presentation?
Sure.
On the laptop.
Oh, it is. Okay.
We actually present this at every commission meeting once a month.
About two hundred. You have, you have to copy this. So, I mean, it's easier to see if you can look at the numbers.
Yeah. So right now, we're going out for a new tree trimming contract. And one of the things that we're doing, and Brian will speak to a little bit, is we'll have a master op risk in this contract. It has a lot more accountability and we'll be speaking, it'll be better liaison with the tree wardens because we want that green box to go down a little bit. And we want the cyclic to be three- to five-year cyclic training plan, which is, would give you the most productivity and efficiency, being that trees are your number one outage cause. Motor vehicle hits, ten. We did have a lot this past summer.
What is that blue, the large blue?
The large blue is equipment. It's any type of equipment failure. A lot of times they're fuses that are actually performing their safety function, but if they blow or they melt, they're considered an equipment failure. A transformer leaking, overloaded transformers. I mean, we're trying to get our GIS up to date so that we can have, you know, the peak information come from our business into the transformer so that we know it's loaded properly, overloaded, it's costing money, unloaded, it's costing money. So our focus is on getting the GIS built. The organizational study goals, long-term study focusing on the direct impacts to the efficiency of the utility with the context of trends and best practices identified in the electric industry. I know that Marcy was there for their presentation. These are some of the targeted areas that are in that organizational study. When I wrote the RFP, what we're trying to find is, you know, When I wrote the RFP, what we're trying to find is, you know, what is the right amount of people doing the right amount of things with the right skill sets for where the business is now and where it needs to go to stay competitive in the future? And is it just made up by, right, I mean, we have a lot of utilities in this country, a lot of utilities in the state of Massachusetts and we know where the utilities are going, the volatility, and we just, you know, we know what, you know, rules and things are coming down, down the pike from NERC and, and these companies that we hired, we gave the organizational study to Lidos, we did not have to, and reliability study got given to Boots. Lidos used to be RW back, it's changed names a couple of times, and Boots, you know, long-term reliability company done, I believe, so. So there's a couple more of the organizational study. I won't go into them. If you have any questions on them, you can always give me a call and shoot me an email and I can give you a little bit more on those. But I think from an organizational standpoint, those cover the, the main topics that we want to do. And I know when Bob took over here, I'm sure we, we addressed a number of the ones that were listed.
That sounds like a lot of peer reviewed, looking at. I'd be curious, well, that's benchmarking. I'd also be curious, what do you think? Does any part of this include disruptive improvements in the industry? For example, remote monitoring or different reliability components? Is there anything in this industry that's notable in terms of reducing recurring or fixed spend, either because of the implementation of technology to do some of the remote monitoring? Or, we're going to talk about LEDs in a bit, that's going to change your use model and replacement rate? Are those factored in here as well? What do we do differently that changes the game as opposed to how do we do what we're doing better?
Yeah, this, the organizational study is more people and processes and skill sets, performance appraisals, development of, of plans, making sure that the salary ranges are not out of whack, and, and restructuring, maybe how some of the structure is set up is not conducive to the best communication between the different groups. And, and that's, that's what that's looking at. The reliability study is also a twenty-year plan that will go twenty years, ten years, five, and into one year. We'll come up with the recommendations, they'll give you the cost estimate and the timeline to do these types of things. Having done organizational reliability studies myself in the past, I've put together some roadmaps of, of what I'm visualizing. I've made some changes that I thought were just pretty obvious, but a lot of them I, I put on hold because, you know, I typically don't hire consultants unless I, I need them to, to be independent review of me. So I don't share with them what I'm thinking, I want to see what they have to say. So that in being from an engineer's standpoint, you might be able to layer on the best and come up with the best product. I just, when I got here, we just, I kind of did a quick assessment just for any smoking guns or whatever like that. So for the reliability goals, condition assessment, the review, system protection, they go to the substations. And again, they're going to be focusing on helping us just build a, a skeleton of the GIS so that you can do the loading, the load study. You can't tell if you have proper capacity in all of the different sections of your town if you don't have a GIS. It's really your fundamental foundation. You improve your system losses, you make the system flexible, and then you're able to, you want, you're able to offer the programs like demand response and, and other things that will help you to shave your peak because that's where you're going to save your money. This is some more of the topics that the reliability study will, will people look at. So speaking to that, can we repeat the question one more time?
In the industry, there's what do we do that we do today more efficiently? And there's what do we do differently that just changes the way things work? I can only speculate what some of them might be by way of example. It could be that instead of using a truck roll, some more diagnostics could be done remotely using technology, I'm making that up, but maybe something like that exists. Another might be you change the way the, the materials used or the, the techniques used. Some, the lighting is one, one big example. I just had a third example and it went out of my head. But it's more what do we do differently that changes the way that this works? And part of that goes to what's disruptive in the industry that, I mean, everyone's, every one of these municipalities is facing the same problem. You've all got the same variables, the same levers and knobs to pull on to run the business.
Right.
So what are you going to do differently? Or is there anything that could be done differently?
Well, there, there's basic modernization steps that, that most utilities are taking that would have been put in smart meters in on the end. And as I've mentioned before, we didn't really put smart meters in the end, they're not two-way communicators, so we have to, we have to, we have to accommodate for that.
Having an ability to get current and voltage at the end of each circuit, certainly, it, it, it's like taking your pulse, you know, you know what's going on at the end because voltage drops as it goes towards the end of the line. Some of your NERC compliance issues as it ties into transmission is calling for mechanical relaying to go to solid state so that it can communicate with all of the relaying on the transmission system. We'll be expanding our SCADA somewhat. Once we get the GIS done, it'll tie into the SCADA. We'll add a little bit more of automation and functionality, whereas capacitor banks that sit on the lines, they're not really placed where they can reduce your losses. You'd want them automated. Right now, we'll have a truck roll out and they'll turn them on and then they'll turn them off as opposed to riding the load profile. So you'll get a lot less losses there, a lot less foam on the barrier, if you will, so we're not paying for the foam. The commercial, I had put a stop to the commercial meters so that we would put full two-way communicators in with them so that we can talk to our larger commercial customers and offer them that peak shaving incentive because we have peak shaving once a year for the large peak and then we have transmission peak once a month. So there's an ability to share. You know, so there'll be some modernization changes made, but again, a lot of our focus is, is going to be getting that GIS up and done and running within the next few years is really what our goal is. And, and getting a lot of the procedures and practices in place.
So, so what's the timeline planned on the GIS? Because I think that's been underway for quite a while, right? I mean, I think even before you got here, they were working on the GIS, right?
Yeah.
How long has that been, been sort of in process?
I think it's been in process for a long time.
And, and what's the plan for when it might be?
I kind of have to start over. Because what happens is when you're building a GIS, you have to have a plan. And like I started off, we're changing the RMLD from a reactive to a proactive company. And, you know, you can build a GIS, but if you don't have a long-term plan of what it's going to look like and what you're going to use it for, then it starts to lose its vision and your processes of how you're getting that as-built information back to the GIS just kind of falls to the wayside.
So all the costs that have been put in are really sunk costs.
Not, it's not all gone.
Is that something going to be removed?
Yeah, it's, it's not all gone, but the, the data collection, there hasn't been a process for as-built data collection to the point where, you know, if you had a Rand McNally map and it looks really good and you want to go to Florida and you're following Florida and you end up in Ohio, you're like, oh, how did that happen? It looked really good. How did I get in Ohio? So a lot of the data that was put in there, some of it was defaulted, thinking that they could use some engineering modeling systems as long as there was connectivity, but defaulted information doesn't help because what you want the GIS to tell you is that particular cable doesn't have enough capacity, it needs to be upgraded. So I just don't think there was, you know, there wasn't a GIS plan that's, that was laid out to get you there. And, and there needs to be and we will get that done because everything is hinging on that GIS. Your, your engineering modeling, your long-term planning, everything.
As you think, to Marcy's question, as you think back to what, what was, what's the root cause of the original failure? Why was it, why was the investment in the path taken earlier ultimately a failure? What's root cause?
I just think that in, in general, the, the failure has been, it hasn't been, it hasn't been a planning company.
So can you just?
I think, I, I don't know that that sounds too simple, but everything has to be planned out. Like you, you, you draw a roadmap and you say, this is what it looks now. Let's say it's a project that takes a year. This is what it looks like now, this is what it's going to look like in a year, this is the functions I need out of it. And you say, okay, I want thirty functions. Okay, well, do we really need thirty functions? Because you only want to maintain the monster that you can maintain. It's nice to have all these bells and whistles and up to a hundred thousand layers, but if you only need these things to do your engineering studies, you may only need five layers. And you may only need these few access databases. And you just really streamline it so that that's all you're expecting the engineers to bring back to the field, that's all you're expecting to, to take care of so that you know that it's one hundred percent accurate. And then we're putting it on, we have a share point at work and we're going to be putting up dashboards so that you're seeing every day, what are we selling? What's going on? What, you know, each, each group will have a little dashboard.
So as I hear you say that, it sounds like the original vision was too expansive and it couldn't be executed.
It may not have been too expansive, it just wasn't carry, they didn't have a process to carry it through because I don't really know that they knew what, what it was going to be used for. Like they didn't visualize, what are we going to use this for?
Okay, thank you. Bob?
I don't know of our organization nearly as well, but in ours, first of all, technology people are always interesting. We need, and I'm sure you need, technology people that understand what the business is.
Yeah.
And they're extremely practical, they understand the objective. A lot of technology people don't, don't have that.
Right.
And if you go to a, a technology firm of any sort, there's no chance you're going to get that. They're going to sell you the most elegant thing that has a million dollars and looks really pretty and all of a sudden you are in Ohio.
Right.
So it's, and sometimes it's easy to, and we've done one thing, I won't mention which software, but we bought a software package and we pretty much ended up in Ohio, but it looked really good. It said Florida, look how warm it is. And so we've had to spend a lot of time on our own, training the company as to what they should have really built for the market.
Right.
So it's, technology's a real tough area because there's the theoretical people and there's the marketing people and then there's the actual users.
Yeah.
And they seem to almost be ignored in that process.
God bless them, yeah.
Well, the good part is that, you know, Hamed and I have both built GIS. We know exactly what we need to, what it needs to produce. We don't need to ask anybody. You want double poles? You need to know double poles, right? That's a political thing. You want all your double poles, you want all your transformer load management, okay? You want to know, you want to have your system planning and your contingency so you know if this is out, this is going to be able to connect in and you'll have enough capacity for those contingency backups so that you can get power back in right away.
What do you mean by double poles? Sorry.
When they put up, when a pole gets hit by like a motor vehicle and you place another pole, whether Verizon does or not, right now, they don't have a ball in court. So typically what happens is electrical transfer and then you call Comcast and you say, okay, it's time for you to transfer. And then they go to Verizon, it's time to you to transfer. And there'll be a software that there's a ball in court, so you always know. And the selectmen like that because you call me on the phone and you'd be like, there's too many double poles and I'll just have all the linemen go out on Saturday and we'll get them all done and then I'll give you a list and you'll be really mad at Comcast because they're way behind. And you'll say, we want Comcast to get all their, you know, so you'll be able to have a list of who's holding up the double pole for the transfer. But they don't have a transfer software right now. We're going to join Verizon's in January, so we'll have that ball in court. But what you maintain on your GIS and what you're looking for to maintain the best reliability for an electric system is not a lot and those are what we're targeting. We just need the databases to be accurate. Because when you're doing an electric system, if, if anybody here understands electricity, if, if your wire a foot is, is voltage drop as it goes towards the end of the line, you can't have a GPS collecting that, that's plus or minus twenty feet. You have to have an engineering-grade collection so that you're only off by a foot so that you actually know that that person at the end of the line has got a hundred and twenty volts. Because if it's not, you, you're going to start burning up some of their appliances. So it, you know, it's not big bells and whistles, it's very basic and, and that's what we're, we're aiming at, that basic foundation.
So do we have problems with that today?
We don't have, really.
People's appliances burning up today?
No.
Are we solving for a problem we have or are we solving for a problem that we might have? Because there's costs involved, right, in solving for problems. So is it one that we have? We know it exists or is it one that we think could exist?
It exists in some areas, it doesn't exist, exist predominantly, but let's say it's the summertime and the ISO calls for a voltage reduction. Because we have voltage reductions all the time. And I have to go to the substation and I have to take off five percent. Right now, because those meters, I don't know what they have at the end and I drop that five percent, I don't know what I got and I need to know what I have. That's in, in, so you build in anticipation of making sure that that's not going to happen.
What's the consequence today of not having that visibility? What happens today?
Well, you know, when I first came and I found out that we didn't have, you know, a pulse at the end, you'd have to take, and, and the ISO's calling for five percent, I'd have to give them, give it to them because it's mandated in a, in a different method. I have to give them a circuit. Whatever equals five percent, I'd have to give it to them someplace different. It's better to give five percent because if I lower it five percent, most people's appliances won't even feel that unless it's a highly sensitive solid-state piece of equipment. But if I have to give them five percent and I don't know what the voltage is at the end, I'll have to just take out a circuit. Because if you don't, you get fined. So I want to do it the right way. And so that's what we're focusing on.
So I, I was there for the reliability organizational study presentations and I thought that the firms seemed like they were very impressive and really did seem like they know what they're doing and I think it's probably a really good thing that you're, that you're getting those, you know, in play.
Yeah.
I, I'm curious to know, what, what have you laid out to them in terms of like what your objectives are for the organization? So in other words, we want to be the most efficient possible, we want to be the most customer-friendly possible. Like what, what are, what kind of, what have you told them is your, you know, vision and mission in terms of the organization? Because that obviously drives what kind of answers we'll get back to.
That was in the mission statement that we said, they, we want to be efficient and, and productive.
Okay, so that's, that's, it's based around the mission statement, maybe?
It's based around the mission statement and that's what we're driving at. We're, we're not trying to be, you know, uber smart grid, we're not trying to be, I mean, we have good customer service, our customers like us, we don't want to, we don't want to fix things that aren't broken. We just want to make the system flexible so that we can stay competitive and we want to do it for the least amount of money possible. And the one good thing you have, I think, with, with some of the talent we have and in myself and Hamed, is we're able to do a lot of the engineering in-house and we're trying to teach some of the other engineers how to do it as well. Because not having to use consultants saves a lot of money. And that's a good thing. So, you know, so that's what, that's what we're trying to do. And, and I'll look forward to giving you an update after, I think, you know, it's a, it's a very, if I can use the term naked, it's a very naked thing to do. When you do an organization and reliability study, you know, I, I welcome them in to criticize and say whatever and give us a list because I really want to know what it is. And I want to know if it matches what I already know. And, you know, you don't always get like, you know, super awesome things and whatever. And like I said, I maintain a level of independent review because I don't want to feed them any information because then it defeats the purpose of me getting in that independent review. You know what I mean? So, okay. This, this slide just basically shows how you take the organizational study and the reliability study and it comes together for, you know, so that you can come up with your twenty-year plan. And then we'll go back and we'll take the strategic plan that was written in two thousand eight and we'll, and the last piece will be to upgrade that. But the, these organizational and reliability studies will be written out again in one year, in five year and in ten year. And in any, all the recommendations will come with a cost and priorities and we'll have to sit down and say, yeah, that needs to be done, yeah, that doesn't need to be done and that will all be shared. Okay, I'm, I'll turn this over to Brian for the LED streetlights. Thank you.
Any other one?
Brian?
So the LED streetlights, we've met with the town managers and the town administrators at the, the beginning of this and kind of talked about our ideas for that. We have installed twenty-five watt LED light. We have installed twenty-five watt LED lights, um, in the, in the four towns we served. Uh, we use those to replace fifty watt, hundred watt, and two fifty watt, uh, light. Technically, it's like a seventy watt equivalent, uh, figured we'd give that a shot. Um, helps reduce our inventory and if it works for all those fixtures, it can, uh, save the town a little bit of extra money. Um, we also replaced four hundred watt floodlights with a, a ninety-three watt fixture. Um, so we've gone over these locations with the town managers and town administrators of the four towns. And at the conclusion of the pilot, uh, we're looking for an LED full implementation, uh, over the next three years, starting fiscal year two thousand sixteen.
Can I ask a quick question?
Sure.
Uh, what's the comparable lumen output for those replacements compared to the original, you know? Um, are you losing lumens when you do that?
The twenty-five watt is approximately equivalent to a seventy watt high pressure sodium.
Okay.
So it's kind of in between the fifty and the hundred. Reading has all three sizes, fifties, hundreds, and the two fifties. Most of the two fifties are on the aluminum streetlight poles in the center area.
Mm-hmm.
Um, so we did, flip to the next slide, we did, uh, use some, replace some of those down on Haven Street, down by the tracks. There's six of those down there. Um, figured it was worth a shot, they're fairly close together, i- if that works as a suitable replacement. It, it's a significant reduction in usage for the town. If not, we can easily take those down and use them elsewhere, so we figured, why not give it a shot?
You're saying visually, there's not a lot of the technical difference in terms of the light intensity when you put these up?
Yeah, if, if, if you guys are happy with the output.
Have you actually, sorry Bob, go ahead.
Um, and just to step in, um, the other three towns were probably quite reasonable, but I was pretty unreasonable. I didn't wanna publicize this, so I wanted to, you know, get out a press release and say, what a wonderful thing, and it is a wonderful thing. But I said, let's not tell anyone, let's find out if they notice a difference. And I didn't get a single call, nor did anyone in the building or the police station. So that's the highest compliment you can get. If we'd fooled anyone, I guarantee you, we would've had calls. And you wouldn't really know the real honest answer.
So people would complain, do you think, or people would've said it was really good?
So you think the phones are gonna ring tomorrow or something?
It's too late, we've been living with it for months.
Now that we've been living with it for months, um, I'd be curious to actually have one second pass through, it would be just to get a, um... Now that you know it's there, what's your reaction, kind of take? 'Cause one is, if I'd moved something in the room and said, what's different, you probably wouldn't notice it. On the other hand, if I said, I moved the painting, do you mind, you might have a different view, so.
Yeah.
And these things are funny, because the way that they look, some people, I'm not suggesting it's a, a single disagreeable vote wins the battle. But oftentimes, there is some subjectivity as to whether it's, uh, bright enough and so forth.
Right.
Particularly with these things, they don't, you had an illustration earlier, it's a wider light, it's not a yellow light, it's cool, not warm, so.
Yeah.
Have you thought about doing that?
Um, we are looking to get feedback, um, to...
We've actually sent the police around afterwards.
They're probably a good proxy.
Yeah, I mean, they're out in the community all the time, keeping their eye out at night, and they said it was fine.
Oh, good, good, excellent.
Um, so the, the lights that we've replaced in, in town so far, um, is, uh, existing fifty watt lights on Cross Street. Uh, we replaced five lights there. Uh, on Main Street, um, starting at Summer going north, uh, there was hundred watt lights there, we replaced, uh, five of those.
So between Summer and where?
Uh, starting at Summer, going north. So down, down to about the convenience store or so. Yeah. Um, and again, the two hundred and fifty watt replacements down on, on Haven Street. Uh, then you guys, uh, it's the first six lights coming up from the train station, yeah. Uh, and those kind of alternate back and forth on either side of the road. Uh, and then the ninety-three watt LED floodlights replace the four hundred watt. It's about a two fifty watt equivalent. Um, there's, uh, four of those in town, one of them is in the, the front of the town hall parking lot out here. And then there's three behind CVS in the town parking lot. Um, some of the open items that we're looking for is, uh, years ago, Reading shut off a bunch of streetlights to save money. Well before my time, but, uh, uh, there was a few of those that are still left off. So the police chief looked at those and made a determination that most of them were okay. Uh, there's three of them that we have to, to talk to the town about to figure out what we wanna do with those, 'cause they're in underground subdivisions. And we can't really just take them down. We could if we want to, but it, it is more work involved, so we gotta kinda work together on, on that.
So the proposal is to take them down?
The, not the underground ones, the underground ones, we wanna talk to the town to figure out what you guys wanna do. The existing ones that are shut off on, most of them are on Main Street, they shut off like every other light. Uh, the police chief looked at it and said, the lighting looks fine, so we'll just take them down, so. So we're not getting nuisance calls saying, you gotta light out.
Got it.
I, I have a question, and, you know, Bob, this is probably for you. If there's, if there's a place where actually you do need a streetlight, how does that happen? So there's a spot on Prescott Street, which is going from the train station to where it's dead. Now, one is there's a light out, but another is, I think even with that light, there's a dead spot, and I'm just wondering.
Typically.
Is that these guys? I don't, I don't think, I think it's actually more of a town thing, but I don't know.
Typically what happens is you call either the DPW director.
But there's no light.
Yeah. You either call the DPW director or like the public safety officer.
Yeah.
And then they'll talk to the town and the town will send us a letter saying, either add a light here, or if there's a light out, you can call us and we'll come out and, and fix it.
And in Reading, sometimes we own some of the lights, sometimes they own some of the lights, so.
Well, and this is, I mean, literally, this is on Prescott Street, it's right by the train station and the sidewalk's not great on that side. And then you can't see, and that's where everybody parks, so.
Could you repeat that process to me? Is it something where RMLD will look at it and then I'll make a recommendation to you?
For instance, I, if I got a call, or DPW quite often gets calls. First, um, determination is, who owns the light? If it's ours, we fix it, or we ask you. Um, if it's yours, we mention it to you. It, I've never got a call until Marcia just said, oh, if you need a light here, there isn't a light. So that's next.
They usually, um, with the other towns.
It, it might be fine once the light's backlit, but I don't, I think, in looking around, it thought, looked like there was still gonna be a, a dead spot.
Because the town pays for the energy, and typically what would happen, and that's why I'm wondering what the policy is. Typically what'll happen is the RMLD will get a request, will have the night man go out and kind of assess the safety of it. Sometimes you may need a second light, because it's every other pole at a corner for safety. And if we feel like it could be justified, we would ask for permission if you would like to install another one, and we would put it up. But if you involve the police to make that determination instead of us, then that's fine too.
As I say, I've never, I've never heard of a request in the ten years I've been here. Lights out, sure, all the time.
Right.
But not, I need a light.
I do like, yeah.
Other than back in the CBS log, recently, we've had some conversations.
We just fixed those, and I think we called Jean and maybe directed it.
Yeah, and I think the fixing is probably all they really needed, as opposed to, can you please add some ones, but we'll find out.
Yeah, those, they're, these lights are more, more directional, they're dark sky compliant, so the floodlights are more directional. So we just had to adjust the floodlights back there and it seemed to take care of it.
Now, this might be skipping ahead in your presentation, but as part of this pilot program, do you have a cost benefit that you're tracking as well with it?
Um, there, there is a cost savings, I'll flip to the next slide here, so.
Figured I was jumping ahead.
So again, we're looking at a full implementation, you know, assuming successful pilot over the next three years. Total cost of about three point three million. Um, we did receive a LED grant from the DOE R, uh, was for two hundred and fifty thousand. Hundred and twenty-five thousand of that was specifically for municipal street lighting, and it's to be split between the four towns. Um, as far as savings, this is based on the complete switch over. We're estimating that we're gonna see approximately sixty thousand a year in maintenance savings, not having to change bulbs all the time. These have a, a life expectancy of about twenty-five years.
And what's the realistic life expectancy of it?
I think they're too new to tell, but.
I guess we'll see, uh, probably fifty.
Yeah, and that the twenty-five years isn't the light dying, that's when the, the level decreases below acceptable standards.
Gotcha.
Um, looking at saving over two million kilowatt hours a year. And the town should see about a thirty percent savings on their street lighting bill for, for these lights that are flat rated. Obviously doesn't include.
Why would it only be thirty percent? You're describing a twenty-five, a seventy-five percent reduction in energy consumption.
Uh, it's an estimate, but we also have to include the cost of the fixture in the rate. So the, the fixtures are fairly expensive, so they, you know, it's, the cost of the lights depreciated over the, the twenty-five years. But that cost has to be covered in the rate, so the savings is a little bit less than.
You're recovering three point three million through the rate, is that correct?
Yeah, in essence.
Okay. And that three point three is for the four towns, or for the, just reading?
It's total for the four towns, yes.
So the thirty percent is the savings after the recovery?
Yes.
You're depreciating the asset over however long to recover that.
And that three point three is streetlights, 'cause if you look in the budget, it's two point three for streetlights. And then what's also added in there is the, um, private area lights.
And police details.
The, the question I actually, um, that I have for you though is, the, where you put these lights in? Are you able to actually look at one light and say, I know what that, um, does, I know what that costs, I know what that produces, from a kilowatt standpoint? And then judge it against your pilot program with the new light, do you see the difference? Or is that, is that not?
We know the wattage that the old lights use, and we know the wattage that the new lights use.
But you don't know the actual usage of that particular fixture?
The, the rate's based on the light being on four thousand hours a year. And, and also basically the wattage of the light times that four thousand hours.
Mm-hmm.
So then that's a, an estimate that, you know, we've done studies on, and I think that's pretty common across the industry of, of what they use for estimating how many hours the light's on a year.
Okay. Where did you, where did you depreciate the three point three million, is that the full twenty watt?
Uh, Jane.
Twenty-five years.
Yeah, I think it was twenty-five.
Beyond the use of the light for the bulb?
Because the, the use of the light for the bulb is twenty-five.
It's supposed to have a light, it's gonna be twenty-five years, yeah.
Right, okay, right. What is, what is that transfer to, Bob, what's thirty percent of our electric bill?
It's just the streetlights.
Just the, yeah, just the streetlights.
Two hundred thousand or so in streetlights, that might include some traffic lights, I'm not sure. So, so it's a little bit of money.
And then the questions on the streetlights?
Is it a dimmable?
Uh, no.
Not the standard ones that we bought. That's why when, um, Brian said the twenty-five watt will go into the different other wattages. If you wanted a one for one fifty watt for an equivalent, you'd buy nineteen watt. But the nineteen watt is like custom and it would cost money, so we're trying to standardize.
Significantly more expensive.
So, um, when, when Bob gives us the, uh, the email address for comments, he may never put it up. Um, in some ti, in some areas where we're putting a twenty-five watt in for a two fifty, you may say, we wanna bump that up. Uh, we wanna start off on the conservative side and see if it's, if it illuminates enough, and if not, then, then we'll, um, we'll increase it.
So what kind of comments have you gotten from some of the other communities where you did publicize this? You haven't, haven't publicized it yet?
We didn't publicize at all, we decided not to put the pressure.
So you, so you took Bob's idea?
So I think I've gotten two comments so far.
I think that's a good idea.
Um, both from Reading, uh, one person absolutely loves them. Uh, and the other one didn't mind it, but it doesn't light up his yard as much. And that's part of these lights being more directional, is the cutoff in the back is sharper, so there's less light pollution.
Those people don't want this fall over on their yard, this guy did.
Right, yeah.
Now he has to get his own floodlights.
Yeah. So now we'll go into the, the tree trimming, um...
Actually, before you go on, Brian, is, um, any thought to doing something beyond this to the interior for the, for your consumer base? It strikes me that this great success, you guys are a natural mouthpiece for promoting the use of this technology.
I think Jane gets into that a little bit. But part of that, uh, hundred, the two hundred and fifty thousand dollar grant that we got, the other half of it is for, um, commercial and residential programs. So the, uh, tree trimming program, so we're looking at, uh, altering the way our current program is a little bit, going to a, a three to five year cycle with three crews. Um, with an annual budget of about six hundred and forty thousand dollars. Um, currently, some of the areas that we're trimming, uh, we have to visit multiple times, so that, you know, it's not being trimmed enough. Uh, the type of trimming isn't enough to meet the demand of the, the growth of the tree. Um, so we, we've met with the, the DPW director and the tree warden to talk about this. We have a, a new tree con, contract coming out. So we're looking at going to a directional method of the trimming, kinda directs the tree around the wires to lengthen the amount of time that we have, have before we have to get back out and do the same area over again. We're also looking at increasing the radius from a five foot cut to an eight foot cut. So it gives us a little more time before we have to go back and, and hopefully save us some money on that. Uh, the, the new, uh, tree company that we're, we're going out to bid for is gonna have to have a master arborist on staff. He's gonna put together an integrated vegetative, vegetation management plant and distribu, yeah, excuse me, distribution vegetation management plant. Which will, you know, be available to the tree warden of the town. And, uh, also a hazardous tree removal plan, you know, hope to be more proactive on, uh, trees that are dead or dying, that look like, you know, they might, may fall and impact our lines. Be kinda proactive on that.
This may be off topic, but do you know if Comcast and Verizon have anywhere near the degree of concern about trees overgrowing their rights of way and wires?
I couldn't tell you if they do or not.
No. Have you attempted to try to share some of the costs with those guys? It's the same poll, it's, you're out there in the same trip.
Take advantage of our umbrella trimming.
Well, yeah, I'd be trying to recoup some of those, is that, I'm serious, is that a...
That's been a twenty year fight with me, so it's, it's not going well. It's, uh, generally, um, it's the same with the pole testing that we're doing. Um, we'll end up testing their poles, because we care if they fall over on our people.
Yeah.
And, um, you know, the double poles with that ball in court, we'll be asking the selectmen to help us move that along.
What, did you call it a ball in court?
Ball in court, well, and it's the next person to make the transfer, so you can get the double pole out. Um...
So they're not cooperative?
Um, in some ways, they are. But they don't.
'Cause they're getting a lot of money out of the, the residents of the town.
They certainly are.
They certainly should have a bigger stake.
Good luck.
We're a bit of a different game. We don't have as much, so. Thank you, Brian.
Yeah, any other questions on that? Turn it over to Jean.
Thank you for having us. Um, I only have a couple of slides here to talk about, um, one of the, one of the topics we're talking about is LED and efficiencies. And that's actually a reduction in our sales. So when reducing kilowatt hours, uh, that's a concern for us, because that's eroding our revenue, because that's how we collect our revenue. So one of the aspects that we're looking at is charging stations, electric vehicles, if they really take off, that, that will produce, um, an avenue for the RMLD to increase our sales. Currently, uh, we're, um, installing three dual charging stations, um, which has the capabilities for charging six cars at any one time, um, at one of our commercial sites in Wilmington. Um, the, the, it was analog devices that had the request, however, they didn't wanna own the charging station. So RMLD will own the charging stations, and these will be a pay per use. So employees who, um, work there will be able to charge their electric car while they're working. Swipe a credit card, um, will develop a rate for the, for, for the charging stations, um, which will be attractive for the customer. Um, in addition, uh, we applied to the DOE R, uh, for a grant that was available. Um, and we were successful in that grant, and it paid for half the cost of the charging stations. Uh, that, that, uh, came up to a, a dollar amount of approximately ninety-seven hundred dollars for those three stations. Um, the charging stations arrived today at the RMLD, uh, the electrical contractor is picking them up, and will be installing them tomorrow. And so that project should be up and going within the next, um, by probably the, uh, end of December, most likely, um, prior, uh, a little before that.
So these are only available, though, for analog device employees, right?
Correct, correct. However, um, we also have, um, a, a pilot rebate program for both our residential and our commercial customers. Um, we are currently offering a rebate for the fifty percent of the cost of the charging station, as well as the installation capped at fifteen hundred dollars per charging. Uh, we have two residential customers in Reading who have actually taken advantage of this. There's someone on Mineral Street and on Warren Street, who have the Chevy Volt and, um, who have applied, have spoken with us, and we've reimbursed them for those costs. Um, additionally, on the commercial side, there is, there may be more grants available. Um, we are working with another... Additionally, on the commercial side, there is, there may be more grants available. Um, we are working with another customer who's, um, going to be installing them for their cu- uh, for their, uh, employees in Wilmington. They're building a new building. And, uh, we have contacted the GOR, and there still is grant money available. So if the town is interested in pursuing this, we'd be happy to work collaboratively with you. Uh, there's different ways we can structure it. Um, some businesses, uh, use that as a marketing tool, so they tie it into their service. And they encourage patrons with electric vehicles to use the charging stations while they patronize either their restaurant, their storefront, or whatnot. So you can set it up, uh, a couple of different ways, and we'd be willing to work with, um, any of our customers in doing that. Uh, the nice thing about the residential time of use, both, uh, customers who have this are on the residential time of use, which means that they charge their car at night. Typically, the driving habits will be changing, where you won't be filling up your car on the way to work. You'll be plugging it in before you go to bed. Charging it at night, and then just topping it off, depending on how far you have to go or whatnot. Um, so just the, um, it's very cost-effective for customers on that rate, and, uh, the rebate is on our, on our website, r, W W dot R M L D dot com.
Back on the EDI, the analog devices.
Yep.
What's the estimated, what do you think a ballpark number is for them to charge a vehicle?
Um, it's probably gonna be under two dollars a gallon. That's about a dollar, the, the, the pilot rate that we have, because we have to recover the cost of the charging rate. And currently, we don't have a lot of usage data, so we've made some assumption in, um, assumptions in that. We figure that we'll, each car will charge on average, uh, four and a half hours per day for each charging station. So based on that usage, we've developed a pilot rate, which will come out to be about twenty-five cents per kilowatt hour. Uh, the charging stations can take a maximum draw of seven point two KWs per hour, and so that's equivalent to a little under two dol- two dollars an hour. You're welcome. Um, and to tie it to Mr. Marina's question earlier, um, part of our rebates that we're working with our commercial and municipal customer is li- is related to lighting. Uh, we currently offer lighting rebates for the replacement of inefficient lighting. Uh, predominantly, a lot of our commercial customers and municipalities are looking at LED lights internally. Um, so we currently have a program that will be capped at fifty percent of the cost, or ten thousand dollars, depending on, uh, the amount of savings. And for the municipalities, tho- those are capped at fifteen, so you get a little extra, um, being one of the four municipals that we service. Um, in addition to that, we have a commercial energy initiative program where we're looking at peak demand reduction programs. Um, as Colleen had mentioned before, our capacity and our transmission costs in the future are all driven by our summer and our monthly peaks. Um, in twenty seventeen, eighteen, those are gonna go from three dollars a kilowatt month to fifteen dollars a kilowatt month for capacity. And so we're really trying to formulate our rebates and incentivize our customers to work collaboratively with us, um, to reduce those peak demands. And we've, um, incentivized our rebates to match that. Um, and the last project that we're working on is a voluntary demand management program. Uh, we're starting off with our commercials and our municipal customers, and we're getting them to sign up for a program where, um, during the summer peak or during monthly peaks, we notify them through email. We work with them to develop load shedding strategies, whether it's a building management system or actually facilities people going up and either raising temperatures or shutting down processes. Uh, and then we have a program where we determine the actual ki- um, kilowatts that were reduced for that period. If it happens on a peak time, we share the savings with that customer. So currently, um, just as an example, our monthly capacity and transmission costs average around ten dollars per kilowatt month. We'll give the customer five dollars per kilowatt month if they were to shed on that annual peak in each month and hit that peak. Um, so there's an economic savings to that. Uh, we've actually met with the new facilities director in Reading, Kelly Cullen, Cologne? And, um, she's very excited to pro- about the program. She's actually signed up, and we're working collaboratively with her to determine those load shedding, um, applications. Oh, in addition to load shedding, um, if, if a customer's have emergency generators or generation behind the fence that they have, that's a much easier fix to do. Although it come, it goes hand in hand. If you have an emergency generator and it's permitted for that, you're not allowed to use that generator for peak shaving. So it's very imperative that we work collaboratively, look at the permitting of how that's permitting, to determine if that is able to, well, participate in this program.
So the commercial improvements, that all improves your baseload. That'll, that'll reduce your, your baseload.
It's not the baseload, it's more peak. Um, a- and like, as I mentioned earlier, lighting is probably base, um, but when we're looking at motors, HVAC, um, any kind of compressors, um, and the, and the load shedding programs, those are all peak reductions. Um, and so we're just trying to flatten that.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Any other questions, no more?
No, they're very informative.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you for coming.
Thank you, everybody.
Thanks.
Listening, listening. Listening to this sec- session, it makes me think of the, uh, I'm sorry, I'm gonna say it badly, the, uh, Reading's climate.
Oh, yeah, climate action.
Climate advisory.
Thank you.
Committee.
Uh, this, this strikes me that there's a synergy here between the delivery of, of energy and the introduction of new lighting. There's, there's gotta be a vehicle there to take advantage of that group's initiatives and enthusiasm around the same topic.
There's actually, there's actually at least one member of RMLD who's on that climate advisory, yeah, committee, so there is a tie already.
Great. Let's see, next on the agenda is, uh, discussion on the Birch Meadow field lighting, uh, project. So I see John Feido in the room. John, um, you wanna come on up and walk us through this?
Yeah, let's quickly just introduce, we just got out of Recreation Committee meeting, so I'll be able to, uh, strong our, some of my members to come up and listen to the discussion. So I'm gonna introduce them really quick. Uh, Rich Hand, he's our current sitting chairman. Uh, Dan Foley is actually attending his first meeting tonight, um, so welcome to him. And, uh, Frank Griswold, who most of you, I think everyone knows. So Bob had asked me to, uh, just come tonight to initiate a conversation about the possibility of adding, um, some lights down to the Birch Meadow complex. We're currently working on the Birch Meadow master plan. We're making slow progress, but we're making some progress. Um, the one thing we know for sure is that, um, we're gonna eliminate areas down there. And it doesn't matter what's under it. It could be a lacrosse field, it could be a soccer field, it could be a baseball field. So we definitely know we want lights that will be, that's in the current plan. It will be in the next plan. It will be in probably any iteration of that plan. Um, so I, what I did was I approached, um, with the concept that there could be some capital money available within the next twelve months. I approached a company called Musco. They're currently the output that, uh, does our lights at the stadium field and, uh, the tennis courts. And you've seen them, they're high, high professional, high quality lights. Uh, they're by far the industry leader. Um, they're as good as to let me know if a light bulb was out or fuses out, I get an email. And not only do I get an email, but they promote and they service it for us, uh, under our twenty-five year contract with them. So, um, the lights are expensive. I won't sit here and tell you that they're inexpensive. Uh, but this type of project could have so many ripple, rippled, uh, benefits for this community, it, I can't even begin to tell you how great it could be. So what I did was I asked Musco Lighting to, uh, break up the area into several different locations that I felt we could benefit from either upgraded lights or new lights. Um, with the idea that we could expand our field space by basically illuminating some areas, we could actually promote more activity. This past, uh, fall, we actually had to go out and rent, um, portable lights for one of our programs, because it grew so big. We had to roll out, uh, two bags of lights to make it work. Um, so what I did was I asked Musco Lighting to give me ballpark numbers on what I'd be looking at to illuminate all the areas. Uh, so they were good enough to give me the breakdown, but they were also good enough to tell me that if you did more than one area, there would be some kind of an economies of scale discount. So I think what you're looking at is pretty, uh, reflective on what we might be looking at as far as an expense to, to get this done. Uh, so I looked at basically four different areas. Uh, the lighted softball field's the first one. Uh, most of you know that as the place where the men's softball team and the high, uh, the men's softball teams and the high school softball team play. Bob, is that mapped out?
Yeah, you want the.
Yeah, that map's probably a little bit better, so we can talk about the areas first. Uh, and I'm gonna stand up.
You wanna try to lift this, maybe agree, it's good.
No, that's okay. Um, i- unless anyone, if it's following anyone, I can just talk through it. Uh, so this is the lighted softball field. We currently have poles all around there, wooden poles. Uh, we're talking, um, four to six big tires going around, somewhat protect people, I guess. Uh, but it's not exactly great. And that is used as our high school field and our main, um, men's softball field. We als- we also have two other softball fields. Um, that we also have high school practices on both those fields, youth practices on both of those fields. This area in the middle doubles as a practice football field and practice soc- soc- uh, soft- soccer field, I'm sorry. Um, in the fall season, in an up here, we have, um, turf two, which is the, uh, synthetic turf two field, which is already lit, uh, with the same telephone poles and can lights that we have. Um, down here is Morton Field. Uh, Morton is the, one of the three ninety-foot baseball diamonds, uh, we have in Reading. It's probably, I'd say, one of the tops in the states now, that we've done all the work to it. New infield, new fence around, nice scoreboard. So, and I'm sure you've heard Mr. Halsey say it, and you've probably heard me say it, there's two simple ways we can expand our field space. We're landlocked. We can't really develop anymore. What we can do is we can illuminate, uh, to add time at nighttime, and we can, um, synthesize or synthetic our, our fields to, uh, increase playability. So it's the, the best ways to do that at this point. Adding lights to this field solve, so this field in particular solved a lot of, um, scheduling issues for us. Currently, we are, we're on a three-day-on, three-day, uh, two-day-off for men's softball and youth softball. We could very easily, with lights, just move all the men's stuff to seven-thirty at night. And the youth could play before seven-thirty. It's just a very simple fix. So there's so many ripple impacts. Um, the aesthetics of the field, right now we have wires hanging everywhere. We have one pole that's on a forty-five degree angle. Um, like I mentioned, tires around the poles. Aesthetically, it just doesn't look real nice. It's not real representative of what Reading looks like. I think an upgrade is, uh, long overdue. Often, we charge people with, uh, turning the lights on and off themselves. It's all manual. I can't tell you how many times I've driven in and found my lights left on overnight. It's just a huge, huge waste of money. Um, with Musco Lights, you can make a simple phone call, turn them on, turn them off.
Now, that, uh, spot in the middle, John, that's the place that we, um, rolled in the temporaries to be able to.
Yep, there's, we put a station here.
Right down here, yeah.
Yep. And it wasn't enough. It was adequate, but it wasn't enough.
Right. Well, they're not, I mean, they're temporary lights.
Yeah, it did its job, but.
They're gonna be the same as what's designed for us, to make the space usable.
Right.
And a couple of quick questions. So you're gonna reduce the number of poles and tires in, in the process of doing this?
It should, yeah, 'cause what would ha- I, and I don't have a drawing on it yet. My, the theory is, is we would need, right now we have six poles for the whole stadium field. Is it six or four?
At least four.
It's only four poles. So I'm sorry, it's four poles. I was thinking the tennis courts have six. So it's four poles for the whole entire stadium field. Stadium field fits, fits almost in this footprint. So you're gonna reduce the amount of poles you have, and I don't think we're gonna have poles in the middle. I don't have a drawing of it. Like I said, I have, I've only take this, taken this to the ten-yard line so far.
That's fine. That's fine. This is rough order of magnitude mathematics.
Yeah.
At some point, you're gonna need competitive quotes to make sure you get, even though you might prefer this outfit, you're gonna have to get a competitive number.
Yep.
We just finished up with RMLD. Bob, is there anything that RMLD can do here in terms of?
I don't know. I really haven't talked to them about it, have you?
Not really.
I mean, we just got done with talking about street lighting, which I know it's different.
Yep.
And, but it might be that this is something that our own little group in, in-house can do some of this work.
Well, one of the things that I, I think does apply from the previous discussion, uh, I know that they had commented on the fact that one of their calls was, the new lights went in and suddenly there wasn't the spillover into the person's yard.
Right.
Now, whether that was good or bad for that person, I guess, they were maybe using it as lights, but, um, you know, I think, John, it would be important to speak to the technology, 'cause I, when I see the tennis courts lights go on.
Yep.
The tennis courts light up, and everything else is black.
And I could tell, I can walk my dog up on Parkview Road and the turf two lights are like right in your face. You've got so much light leakage.
We actually get complaints from people leaving the stadium field at football games that they can't see.
Yeah.
With the lights on, because they're so well-directed onto the field.
Oh.
That, i- it's kind of an opposite complaint, that it, we don't have enough light leakage to, it's too good. Um, there, Musco is, I am speaking to Musco, 'cause they are the ones that given us the quote, and that's my experience with them in town already. I don't see this down the road being a, one of those not-in-my-backyard issues, because it's actually gonna improve currently what we have.
I think you are gonna get people who comple- who raise an issue, because it's different. And you're gonna, coming out in front of it with a story around light leakage and directionality is gonna pay a huge dividend, so lead with that. Um, John's talking about the technology. I, I support this. I mean, we can get better use of the fields, not interrupt people that are neighbors. Maybe even reduce some of the, uh, existing light leakage problems. Where's the money coming from?
You're witnessing.
You're witnessing.
John is always good at fundraising, I figure he'd find.
I was told there was perhaps some capital money. I, I think if there was some capital money put towards this, if we fell short, I think we could do some, um, some fundraising, uh, in the community and probably find the difference.
Does this include all the site work as well, or just the lights?
It includes turnkey, yeah.
This LED technology or something?
Uh, they didn't specify that. That's something we could specify, uh, with Musco. I'm not sure if they're doing LED yet.
That may be, it's a twenty-five year light, so it may well be.
Yeah. I don't think it's said in the specs.
No, it didn't say.
Yeah, these are very, very general. We have a presentation next week. We're looking for hard numbers.
So, you know, I guess what, um, one of the questions that comes back is that relighting or properly lighting has been part of this plan, I think, for back seven or eight years.
Sure.
You know, uh, I think, I think Town Meeting has actually approved the original plan. Do I have that right?
Town Meeting has approved a capital plan that has two and a half billion bucks.
Okay, got it.
Part of that is lighting. It's not as much as what's here, for sure.
Right.
It's just sections of it, but that's what they approved.
But, you know, and so I guess, um, so there is capital approval by Town Meeting for a plant.
Yeah.
Right.
And that included, I think, 'cause in looking at the material that, um, that we got in the packet originally, it said that there were gonna be some changes to the original plan, which would probably free up some money that had originally been thought to be spent. Um, so, I mean, I mean, I'm not sure that all the capital plan is sufficient, but I think that, you know, there are some changes to the plan that are gonna significantly lower the original cost. Is it, do I have that right, John?
Yeah, what I mentioned to the selectmen was that the idea of repointing the field, so to speak.
Yeah.
Was small benefit for large cost.
Yeah, it was a.
And that that was, that was the one thing the Rec Committee said, that's not necessarily a good way to spend your money.
Right, yeah, there was a, there was a misconception about something on the last master plan, and somehow it wound up in the last iteration of it, that we would flip essentially. And, and the idea behind it was a, was a nice concept. It was to try to illuminate all the fencing along Birch Meadow Drive and to instead have trees there. So they said, let's flip all the fields and put this field here, this field here, and this field here. Conceptually, it works, but unless you move this field down into Castine's area, that's how it worked. When you took Castine out of the equation, it didn't work anymore. So.
For conservation purposes, that's not gonna happen.
For conservation purposes, yeah. Right.
Yeah, so it kinda defeats almost the whole, yeah.
So when that got taken out. When Castine got taken out the table, this should've gone back to its original structure, 'cause it was a one point three million dollar cost.
Just to move the field?
And there wasn't a one point three million dollar.
Wasn't that also the recharge area for the high school? I, I think the drainage goes to Castine now.
To Castine? Uh, you know, I don't.
Maybe part of that whole system.
I don't know.
So it's really, on what area anyway?
So I, I guess one of the other things, items of interest, at least, I would think, is once, once this plan would become operational, then the users, one way or the other, the costs of, of operation passes through. Um, so that you don't, you know, in other words, what's not being crea- I, I think I understand this right. You're not creating a, you, you spend the capital, but you're not creating a, a new bill.
Right.
Because that, that bill is a pass-through there, you know. In, in other communities that have lit facilities, there's a, there's a cost of doing business. In other words, if, you know, Babe Ruth wants to use it, they're gonna pay for it. Whoever wants to use the field, if it's the men's softball, who I'm gonna suspect are gonna continue to be very heavy users, and that's a cost of their doing business.
Yeah, and I think they're open to that. I think any organization would prefer better lighting down there. It's not great now. It's, it's adequate, but it's what we're used to. I think once you've played under the better lighting, it's something that you don't wanna go back to.
Absolutely.
And that's something that we've, and I'm glad you brought that up, John, because the Recreation Committee actually talked about the same thing, is this isn't a cost that. Is this isn't the cost that the town absorbs, is, is the usage cost, the usage costs are passed back along to the user. So, they do receive bills from us currently, but the current system's pretty imperfect, because I have to do it on a percentage basis. Well, Pop Warner uses it about twenty-five percent of the time, and you guys use it ten percent, you guys use it thirty percent, and that's how they get filled out.
The new stuff lets you operate more efficiently, you can actually tie it right up.
The other, the new system, we can charge, we can turn on the lights for John Arena tonight and charge it to John Arena on an account.
Now, is it, is it reasonable to say that, um, some of the, um, 'cause we heard about that tonight in a previous, you know, discussion, that there's a cost of installation that has a usable life of twenty-five years, we'll say. So, when the calculation of pass-through costs go on, um, essentially, you know, the town fronts the money and then recovers not only the cost of the electricity, but.
You can recapitalize the light.
You recapitalize it and, and, you know, just bring it back in. It, it depreciates, it's passed through tied to the users, and so, where does the money come from? That's a good question, but.
Yeah.
I think that's, you know, ultimately where, I mean, there's capital money set aside, but there's a system for recapture.
Right.
So, I mean, it does become self-funding, I think, if I understand what I heard earlier from RMLD and what I would perceive be done here. That would be part of the business plan.
Bob, we're, we're showing that offset in the capital plan.
I would say right now, it's not how it's fully done. The operational cost, yes, but recapture of capital, no.
Recapture, yeah.
That would be something new.
But we know from the previous discussion.
Yeah, well, they do it.
Yeah, why not?
Well, and by the way, the field's gonna be recapitalized, you've got fencing, you've got all wear and tear, and eventually, you've gotta put a pile of money into that to rehabilitate it.
Well, we've been fortunate enough that those, that's come from private funding up till now, but, you know, at a certain point, you can't always rely on that.
Right.
Part of that is a share and a town accounting question, because the record revolving fund has very limited things it can and can't do. It can't pay wages, for instance, it can pay expenses. It's never been asked to do very much in the area of capital yet available, but.
Right.
So, that's, you know, we, assuming we can cross that hurdle, then this option's available.
Yeah.
Well, I, I know in talking to some neighboring towns, this is, who have recently revitalized, you know. Melrose has just recently done this, um, Fine Banks, I don't know if that's Malden or Melrose or.
It's Melrose.
Yeah, um, so, they have actually, in the creation of their, their field rentals, they have, they're, they're recapturing their capital cost.
I would imagine that's so minor relative to the cost of town.
Well, in a relative way, of the amount of usage that ends up, you know, I mean, right now, people are clamoring for the space and you can't, so, it's not about what it costs, it's about what's available and, you know.
It's another five percent to recover their cost in twenty years if they do it. Are you thinking about, John, doing some of the other improvements at the same time, like, you know, I've been driving down, uh, that, that road and had the softballs come flying over the fence, is there any thoughts about putting that fencing up at the same time, on the same poles?
I hadn't, I hadn't thought of that, Frank.
Yes, past, on, on one of the master plans, it, it was talked about putting up one of the nettings.
Yeah.
Yeah.
That we have done on other locations in town.
The old Green Monster.
But that hasn't been done yet.
So, that becomes a pretty inexpensive item, too. I know Malden has done that, and they've done it, I, I mean, essentially, once the poles are up, the netting is.
You got the lift trucks, you got the guys, you got the poles, another hour.
Yeah, the, that, it would be a minor expense, and it's, it is something that's an issue, for sure, that the balls are flying across the street, the, the guys get bigger and stronger every year, the bats get better every year, there's no doubt that's a problem.
Some get better pitchers.
Solve all the problems. Get rid of the czar.
Let, let's be it.
This looks great, John.
Let's be it.
Any other questions from the woods?
How does the parking impact all this? If you wanna develop this area, uh, parking is a challenge in that, that part of town. My house is right at three o'clock on that, on that diagram. So, there's a lot.
You on the Bancroft Avenue, you say?
On the Bancroft Avenue.
He's the last house.
Last house.
Good neighbor to the, to the fields, actually.
Just identify yourself for the rep.
No, I'm adjusting those up. So, that, that's an inch of concern, and, um, as, as the summer, summer rolls on, it just, it just, it just compounded. And more events means more loitering, uh, it needs a higher police presence, those are some factors you should consider.
Is parking addressed in the master plan?
Bob, just say, the last, it's a little different this time, because you've asked the recreation committee to do it, you're the road commissioners, so there'd be some question as to where would that discussion happen? It could either happen at the rec committee or with you, it doesn't matter. But absolutely, all the neighbors are invited, it's public hearings, the whole nine yards. This, this master plan is gonna take a solid year, at least, with full-time work. And, and the reason that, that it seemed to make sense for John to come and ask you about this or mention it tonight is this really is independent of what the actual master plan says. Unless you just abandoned sections, said, no, we're not gonna use that, you wouldn't replace that. So, yeah, parking is clearly an issue, and, and as the board knows, we've had discussions at a peripheral level with the school department about how to use Imagination Station, that our own parking issues they have at their schools, uh, the Y, we've talked to about parking, we've talked about reconfiguring, uh, Arthur B. Lord Road. So, you know, I prefer to look at the whole area as one problem, if you will, not just little sections. And that goes a little beyond the rec committee, for sure, that, that belongs to you.
To the degree this goes into the early evening hours, at a minimum, the school is largely out of session, so those lots become available to take some pressure off. That's not available during the day or during the afternoon.
Yeah, well, the bigger issue is gonna be, and, and with all due respect, I, I mean, I clearly understand that the front of your home it becomes a parking lot.
That's true.
I mean, and I, and I've clearly seen that myself, and as you know, I often put my truck there so that people can park when I'm down there. So, it's only cost me three tickets so far. However, um, I think the bigger issue is gonna, when you start to open up the other softball fields, I mean, that's the side that is gonna, is gonna have increased activity. So, for example, um, lights down on Morton Field, you can only play one game at a time.
Yeah.
And so.
So, there is plans, we, we started to, but there is plans to apply some one joke?
Yes.
Down the road.
Um, and, you know, part of the direction is clearly, when school is out of session, utilization of those parking lots. You know, follow that path that leads along the tennis courts, between the tennis courts and turf two, that takes you directly to two rather large parking lots, um, which need to be more, we, we need to do a better job of directing activities there, um, so that the neighbors are, you know, so that the neighbors are, get some relief, and I, and I clearly get that. There is a X amount of parking places, and they do get used pretty, you know, pretty heavily.
Thanks, John, Mr. Brown.
Uh, if you go down to engineering, they have the original plan back in nineteen thirty, and nothing's changed. Just, and traffic problems were the same in nineteen thirty, so, and parking was a problem in nineteen thirty, so, something you have to live with.
John, just, uh, before we close, I can remember vividly the discussions on, what was it called? Oh, yeah, amplified sound, and, uh, how there was a great debate about the extent and degree of interference with the neighborhood, and I get it's a sensitive topic, I, I, I don't think you can underestimate the same discussion here with either noise and light.
Sure.
And traffic.
And, and getting out ahead of those with proactive solutions.
Sure.
For example, one of the thoughts is, um, the, the lights that RMLD just talked about, to the degree you can, doing a demonstration or getting a video, it, it answers a lot of questions before they get asked.
Do you have the capacity to go online and show that Musco field layout? This is a pretty interesting look.
You also have at least some experience with different technology, but the tennis court lighting has probably not worked out as terribly as some people imagined. It's bright.
It's bright.
I was gonna say, I think we could, we could probably.
It's bright, and, you know, that's something, that's something you can say, too, it's on now, and there's nobody there, I mean, it's crazy for that.
Until nine o'clock, usually?
Usually till nine, but it's, there hasn't been a soul down there in weeks, like, uh.
Any thoughts about making those on-demand or putting in a big timer?
Yeah, just, that, that same kinda technology, where you could send an email and turn it on and off.
Well, I was just thinking, you put the big rotary click, clicking switch, you know, the timer, like the.
You're saying, get, get an app for that, is that what you're saying? Get an app for that.
Or a turkey timer.
Not, actually.
I know in Lexington, that's what they do. Lexington did a similar thing two years ago to their complex, they have a complex similar to Birch Meadow. Um, and, and I know that the various fields, um, at Lexington are controlled by, literally by cellphone. So, whoever has the responsibility, you know, I mean, it hits the button and it goes off, which is what should happen over there.
Click on one of those, do those blow up? Nah, they don't blow up. One on the bottom left.
Can you control plus sign, it'll, it'll expand it?
Bob, is that something that's part of the, uh, the master plan, talking about the, the lights at all, as far as how they're, um, used and regulated to, to help, you know, offset velocity?
Um, what, what's the deal with tennis courts now? I thought they did have remote access from Kansas or somewhere.
From Iowa. Yeah, they can, we can turn them on, I can use this website to actually turn them on and off.
Yeah.
Uh, but I can also phone in.
And is it weather sensitive?
It's not weather sensitive.
But, but that's available.
And, and that's a, it's a pay-per-use site, right, the tennis courts?
Uh, technically, no. Or you have a season in which you buy a seasonal house to participate.
Okay.
But it's a very, very small, it's, it's late May to early September.
So, there's no way to tell them when somebody that's paid wants to get on there and play it?
No, not right now.
So, that, um, that upper left-hand picture, there's four baseball fields.
That's pretty sharp.
And you'll see where the lighting stops.
Yeah, I was gonna say, the bottom left is the more impressive one, you can really see.
Yeah, you can really see.
Basketball courts and a pool.
Well, they've got eight baseball diamonds and, uh, tennis courts and a pool, and, you know, the technology of the lighting, you know, as you visit places that have taken advantage of it is, I, you literally go into blackness.
Yep.
You step off of these athletic fields.
Just, you can't underestimate the fear and concern on neighbors that won't necessarily understand this, so getting out of it.
Sure. Sure, there's a lot of process to go through before this happens, and I think a conversation with the neighbors is, is, uh, definitely in order.
You have a question?
Yeah, you know, the one thing that strikes me is something like, it's actually pretty impressive to see it there, to see it live would be even better, I'm sure. It, it does actually raise a little bit of a concern where, like you said, as soon as you step off the light, you run to complete darkness. So, now you have a lot of groups that are conjugating around in that, in those areas, is there some kinda like low-level lighting, um, uh, for outskirts of, of the fields that, that we're looking into, or maybe we should be looking into from a safety concern?
You could do parking lot lights, something like we have.
Like, not even like big, you know, something that's like a eight-foot high, eight-foot high tower light or some kind of.
Well, you have those, actually, you know, if you think about Birch Meadow, that exists right now, because it's, you know, all, every, everything's ringed with, you know, streetlight kinda things.
Yeah, I, I mean, I don't wanna add more light to, you know, to, to an issue for the neighbors, but, you know, something from a safety standpoint, which one, make sure that we, we're looking at as well.
Great, thank you very mu- oh, Bob, excuse me.
Thanks very much.
Thank you very much.
Thank you very much.
Thanks, everybody, for coming in.
All right, next, we have a, uh, request to remove restriction on the sale of NIPs for Liquor Junction, One General Way. Is somebody here representing Liquor Junction? Why don't you come up, introduce yourselves?
Yeah, my name is Jasmine, I'm the owner, um, of Liquor Junction, and I wanted to request, um, to remove the, the NIPs restriction.
Hang on, Jess, why don't we empty the room here, so we can hear what you're saying? Why don't we take a two-minute break?
Two-minute break, good idea. Do you want a water? Water?
Yeah.
Yeah, hit me.
Just, just the names.
Yeah.
Bill, it's getting scary. I'm starting to see those patterns now.
Oh.
I'm starting to see those patterns.
Yeah, thank you. Genetic accident, I'm sure.
You're, you always need another one of those.
That's true.
All right, why don't we take up again? So, um, thank you very much for coming up, and, uh, we have before us a request to remove the restriction from the sale of NIPS. Did you have any prepared material you wanted to go through?
Um, no, I mean, we just wanted to, um, request the board to remove the restrictions, um, considering removing the restrictions on the NIPS. Um, it's purely for customer experience, and we're getting a lot of requests from the customers asking to, um, for the NIPS. So we wanted you to consider removing the restriction.
Bob, what, uh, remind me, the, is Liquor Junction the sole, the, the, um, sole?
They're the only ones that have this restriction.
What was the origin of that restriction?
It was actually offered by one or two owners ago that had no need for it. So he just offered it maybe as part of the deal of, I wanna be in this location. And by the way, I don't envision doing this. Um, he presented his operation as, I'll, I'll pick a number, I don't remember, eighty-five percent internet-based sales.
I remember that now.
Um, so that he had no use for this. So he just offered it up to the board without the board asking.
As a concession.
And they said, okay, that's fine.
So there was, in the history, there was no particular reason that it was ex- it wasn't excluded for cause or?
There was no request for it. I don't remember, Paul. Was there ever a discussion in any other situation of this clause? Yeah, I think this was just, it was offered and it was accepted. Not any more complicated.
What's the history been with, uh, the operation of Liquor Junction relative to either?
Uh, it's been no different than the others. It's been good.
I think it starts very well, Ron. Uh, talk to your manager there. Tell who I was.
Any other questions?
How is their violation history been?
It's been clean.
I think they're clean. I don't think, I can remember any.
Everybody gets visited.
Everybody's tips trained, right?
Yes.
You might notice this board's taking a, taking a particular view to that this year, so.
So how long have you folks owned, owned the store?
Um, it's been about six months.
Oh, so you're fairly new owners.
Yeah, for a year, yeah.
Yeah, yeah, okay.
Do you have experience someplace else? Is that said for here?
Yeah, we have another store. Yeah, and we have.
I see no objection to this. Uh, the, the police weighed in and any sense of opposing or supporting this?
I don't think they've ever been asked.
I, yeah, I mean, my take on this is if you have a license to sell liquor and you're doing it appropriately, why would one license be more limited than the other? I don't see.
Yeah, that's the biggest thing, especially where.
I don't see any good reason for that.
Where everybody, where all the other, um, stores are able to sell it, this, the one, this is the one store that we have that doesn't?
Yeah.
You know, that, that to me is, is pretty simple. Um, when you're looking from that standpoint, you shouldn't be hurting one business over, over others.
Okay, if there's no other comment, I'll.
I'd be happy to offer a motion.
Please.
Move the Board of Selectmen to remove the restriction on sale of NIPS on the Liquor Junction liquor license.
Second. Have a second, John. Second. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of the motion, raise your hand. Five zero zero. Thank you very much.
All right.
Welcome. Thanks for coming.
Thanks.
Uh, next we have a, uh.
You're done.
You're done. You can stay with the whole evening.
They wanna hear about the next, they care about the minute, about the opening extension too, so.
I'd just hang out.
Glad you could leave you with this exciting second item.
Yes, right.
Okay.
Paul will join us. The governor and the legislature recently passed, uh, law that the ability to open at ten AM now exists, um, on Sunday. Um, but our, the liquor stores in town have to ask the selectmen's permission to open at ten. And by the way, you can't say no, and it doesn't matter if you say no, because they're already open at ten. But they have to be formally on the record as having gone to the selectmen for a ten AM approval. So this is one of the more bizarre things.
It's a super efficient process, huh?
Remind me again. This is streamlined for a minute.
For, for the horse, sound fucking.
Remind me again how, how it is that they're open already?
Because that's part of the state law. As soon as they want to be open, they can be open. But they have to let us know at some point.
No, it says they have to have made the request, right? But it doesn't say we have to have approved it. It just says they had to have made the request.
They do. It doesn't make any difference.
Once they make the request, then they're okay.
So it's hard to be the.
So we're feeling very important in this process.
Yes.
Oh, yes.
Can I have my, my half hour of that?
Super, you'll have to sign the form.
Oh, good.
You take out your rubber stamp.
This is just a once and done vote.
Uh, is it annual? Yeah, I think it's once, and then it just goes along.
Then it goes with the annual license, right?
So have they all requested it?
Yeah, um, the ones listed.
Everyone except for Pam and most of us.
Yeah, one of them didn't, okay.
Apple Moose.
Now, was this the one where, where originally this came about because restaurants wanted to, to serve Bloody Marys and Mimosa's starting at ten AM?
Probably, yeah.
And then they said, oh, well, you can't, you can't let the liquor stores not get in on that if you're gonna do it.
Yes. You have a motion?
I do. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the change in Sunday hours for liquor stores to open at ten o'clock AM. For Buces Liquors, I'm sorry, Buces Reading Liquors, Inc., DBA Buces Reading Liquors, three forty-five Main Street. Athens Liquors, Inc., DBA Square Liquors, eleven High Street. Jay and Ricky, Inc., DBA Ricky's Liquor, two fourteen Main Street. The John and Kevin LLC, DBA Liquor Junction, one twenty-eight Marketplace Shopping Center, One General Way. And Brooks Brew and Fine Wines LLC, DBA The Wine Shop and More, six seventy-six Main Street.
Very good. Do I have a second?
Second.
Kevin will second the motion. Any discussion?
Does it matter?
No. All those in favor, raise your hand. Five zero zero. Thank you.
Ooh, jeez. For the next several sets, um, there's no objection by the police department.
On the renewals?
We're just doing the all-alcoholic club licenses, is somebody?
And then the next page.
Oh, just a couple pages.
And the next page is more.
Oh, there's more. Oops, yes, sir.
Do we need to have Dan read the whole?
Are we able to dispense with the reading?
Uh, that's up to the moderator.
Right, and we, we've had this discussion about Ricky's that, uh, town council advises us that we are not really empowered to not.
They have served their penalty, uh, we must all move on.
I think it's important for us to speak on, on that, on the record.
Yes.
I think most of us have heard, um, since Ricky's has reopened, that, um.
There was, there's been citizen questions, you know, why that would have reopened, um, prior to the suspension that we imposed. And I just think it's important to say out loud for the benefit of those present and for anybody on TV that, and Bob, you'll correct me where I don't have this right. We imposed a ninety-day suspension in addition to the four-day suspension that was pending for a total of ninety-four days. And that was appealed, uh, through the State Commission. And the State Commission didn't exactly uphold, um, you know, where we were. However, uh, they suspended the suspension, kind of a probationary period, for a period, uh, of forty days was carried over for two years.
Right.
Pending good behavior. Um, so it's my understanding that fifty of the days.
Plus four.
Plus four, so fifty-four of the days that we imposed suspensions were served.
Right.
That the additional forty days that we imposed were, were put into a hiatus for a two-year probationary period. Should there be another violation, those automatically come back in.
In addition to ten AM.
Number one, in addition to whatever else we decide.
And in addition to that, the ABCC ruling was the most severe of any that has happened. So the fact that they said you're gonna stand with fifty days was much more than they have.
So far.
Yes. Far outside, far, far outside of any norm.
They've given them a much more of a penalty than any other, other town has, so.
And I think part of that, that's important too, is that they actually, um, looked at it as three offenses. So even though two of them occurred in the same night, they upheld it as a third offense, and in the next offense, would, would be a fourth offense.
Three offenses, right.
Yes, it was an review.
And again, just a correct one, Mr., the ABCC cannot overturn the ruling of the board, but they're, they made a strong recommendation, Town Council advised us that to not adhere to that would, would probably present an adverse condition should we go to court.
But they're recommending. Right.
And they would probably overturn the whole thing then, and so we didn't, we didn't want that to happen.
Yeah. And, and especially to Marcy's point where it was a, a, um, monumental is the right term, um, ruling.
Certainly landmark.
Certainly landmark, yeah, um, ruling on the amount of days that, that were held in, in the, um, in the forty days pending as well.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Well, I think the, uh, you know, I don't think it was, this creates an opportunity for Ricky's Liquors.
Right.
To, to straighten up and fly right, um, and.
And provides a heavy, heavy incentive to themselves.
Of course it does.
And, um, an automatic penalty if they don't.
And so it's, you know, it's my hope, I just, I can only speak for myself, it's my hope that Ricky's Liquors is able to, you know, maintain, you know, uh, a legal operation throughout their probationary period and, you know, and, and marches down the road. Um, and it sounds like that that's what their goal is, and, you know, I hope that that happens. They are a reading business, and I'd like to see them thrive, um, as long as they do it the way they're supposed to.
We don't take any particular, uh, pleasure in doing this. It's a requirement of, um, overseeing the administrative licenses. I do think there's a secondary, uh, reality, which is that the other, um, uh, liquor stores in town now recognize, I believe, that this has been set as a precedent, so it has, I think, a, a value in just alerting them and making them aware of the level to which this board is willing to go when circumstances demand it.
Well, I think there's a clear, excuse me, Dan, go ahead. You go ahead.
I would encourage staff to, and I think, uh, Chief Cormier said they would take a look at our guidelines in view of this, 'cause they are very light compared to what we did. I, I hope those will be toughened up, uh, once appropriate discussions are held.
I, yeah, and I was gonna, that was part of where I was going. I do think we need to rethink the current guidelines that we are operating under. I don't think that's a topic necessarily for tonight.
No, no, no.
But I, I think that they do need to be, you know, um, they, they do need to reflect the sense of who we are as the board that governs, you know, the liquor licenses. Um, and that, and I do think a clear message that we take the legality of the way that they use their license very seriously, um, so.
Okay.
Proceed your question, Mr. Chairman, Bob, to, uh, is it all right if I just read the name of the entity here so the public knows who we're licensing, instead of all the verbiage?
I think that's fine.
Okay, that's what I'll do.
Makes sense.
It will, the whole motion is, as, Ron was here. Uh, all right, let's do the, we're gonna do the club liquor licenses first. Move that the Board of Selectmen approve the all-alcoholic club liquor licenses for Reading Overseas Veterans, Verroper Gulf Corp., uh, the Knights of Columbus, and American Legion Post sixty-two for a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Subject to the following conditions: All bylaws, rules, and regulations of the Town of Reading and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designee.
I have a second. Marcy will second. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
And I will do the package stores. Uh, move the Board of Selectmen approve the all-alcoholic package store liquor licenses for Buces Reading Liquors, Square Liquors, Ricky's Liquor, The Wine Shop and More, Liquor Junction, Apple Moose for a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Subject to the following conditions: All bylaws, rules, and regulations of the Town of Reading and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designee.
I have a second. Marcy will second the motion and the discussion. All those in favor? Five zero.
And now the restaurants. Move the Board of Selectmen approve the all-alcoholic restaurant liquor licenses for Mandarin Reading, Cafe Capri, Venation Moon Restaurant, Chili's Grill and Bar, Fuddruckers, Bertucci's Italian Restaurant, Longhorn Steakhouse, Restaurante Pavarotti, Grumpy Doyle's, O'Yez, Sam's Bistro, Portland Pie Company, and Munratty Tavern for a term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Subject to the following conditions: All bylaws, rules, and regulations of the Town of Reading and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designee.
Mr. Halsey seconds the motion. Is there any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
And finally, uh, the single wine and malt liquor license. So we have, move the Board of Selectmen approve the wine and malt liquor license for Pelletat, Pat and the Suon, doing business as Bangkok Spice Thai Restaurant, seventy-six Haven Street. Their term expiring December thirty-first, two thousand fifteen. Subject to the following conditions: All bylaws, rules, and regulations of the Town of Reading and of the Commonwealth of Massachusetts shall be followed and subject to a satisfactory inspection of the establishment by the town manager or his designee.
Mr. Sexton seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Um, we have a hearing notice.
Yes. Regarding, uh, the FY fifteen classification plan.
Page five, F one, page nineteen.
Thank you. Please take notice that the Board of Selectmen of the Town of Reading will hold a public hearing on November eighteenth, two thousand fourteen, at nine o'clock PM in the Selectmen's Meeting Room, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, on approving the FY fifteen classification plan. A copy of the proposed document regarding this topic is available in the town manager's office, sixteen Lowell Street, Reading, Massachusetts, Monday, Wednesday, and Thursday from seven thirty AM to five thirty PM, and Tuesday from seven thirty AM to seven o'clock PM, and is attached to the hearing notice on the website at www dot reading ma dot gov. All interested parties are invited to attend the hearing or may submit their comments in writing or by email prior to six PM on November eighteenth, two thousand fourteen.
Thank you. Bob?
Tonight on, uh, your packets, pages twenty, twenty-one, and twenty-two, have some background. Before I get into those pages, let me just give the board some of your, which are new, a little background. When I began as, as town manager, it seemed like thirty years ago, uh, June of two thousand thirteen, um, I left my old position vacant. I did that purposely while we rearranged and reorganized town government, if you will, with the idea that for six months it's gonna be vacant. We then went to a town meeting, did some rearranging, uh, reclassified that empty position. To break it into a couple parts, the finance director piece went to the town accountant, and now that department looks different. And this was the additional piece, and I called it town manager administrative services. Uh, at the time, we had a very strong internal candidate for the position, but instead he became assistant town manager of another organization. Once that happened, um, we had a series of retirements and hires that suddenly hit, and the most significant retire in that process was our HR administrator. So it was just no practical way in the next six months to put this in front of other positions that were full and had to remain full, such as DPW supervisors. At that point, and now, now that gets us to last summer, I jumped into the charter committee, and Steve was just there a little while ago. And I, I learned some things that the charter committee had been discussing during its first nine months when I hadn't been part of it, that I was a little surprised at. And one of the things, um, I was quite pleased to see in a way, and found out later, it wasn't for the reason I thought, that they were insisting that the ombudsman role in the charter be delegated by the town manager to another employee. And I thought, isn't that nice? They think I'm overworked. Well, that wasn't the reason at all. The reason was, uh, and, and Bill can back this up, um, it's almost like a check and balance. They want the voice of the people to be able to go yell at the town manager. And the town manager then has to listen to not only the voice at the other end of the phone, but a colleague. And so, and I understood that, and that, and that made sense. And I guess.
Where, where's the office?
What's that?
Where's the office?
Right next to Frank. Right in there. He'll be well marked.
Okay.
I know what it says. Um, so that, that's made me start to realize, all right, what I had in mind for this job needs to change at least slightly. And it, you know, there's, there's a couple reasons for the change. One is to, as you can see on page twenty, the job description, uh, very clearly in the very first point says to act as ombudsman, and it just cuts and pastes right out of the charter. So that's that first section. I don't think it's appropriate to have that position called assistant town manager anymore if it's supposed to be an advocate for the people. 'Cause that assistant town manager sounds like, well, you're part of the same administration, you're part of the same problem that's not listening to me. Um, so I like the idea of sort of separating that title. And it's no more complicated than that. We have, uh, two assistant town manager positions funded in the budget. They're both called assistant town manager. One's community services, one's administrative services. I'm just asking you to change the title to administrative services director, which is about as simple and plain as I can come up with. And if you look at the page twenty-two of tonight, um, there it is, is a picture. I'm just saying leave the assistant town manager alone because there's still one person in that role, and just, um, you know, split out that title into a new title, administrative services director. And the reason I didn't wanna wait for the pay and classification, which could well be in front of you in December, is I really wanna advertise for this position now. Um, it's gone long enough. I, I've gone too long.
Yes, I believe that.
Yeah. Now, Bob, is this position the one that will, um, take on the website as, as the communications person and make sure that we've got something that people can use and interface with?
Yes. Absolutely. Right. Yeah, they're, they're in charge of the technology, the town clerk, and something called operations.
Mm-hmm.
So it, a, a lot of the discussion you had in the Reading twenty-twenty and the goals and all of that, this falls right in their lap. And I've done the best I can, which is obviously not very good.
Because there's not enough of you.
Exactly.
Not, not.
So this'll be a really important hire, and I do wanna ask the board, especially if one of you that's available during the day can assist in the hiring process, that'd be really helpful.
Any other questions?
No.
No, I think you make sense.
I would just say that, you know, contrary to your last statement, I think you've done a spectacular job, given that you've had two jobs to deal with.
Right.
For an extended period of time.
Two plus, right?
Yeah, uh, you know, it's stunning to me that, I mean, I understand why you've waited this long. It's, you know, I'm glad we're not waiting any longer.
Yeah.
I'm glad we're getting a lot of.
Now we gotta get it filled.
Motion?
Public comment.
Any public comment? Well, well, if you have to give me on the back.
Oh, that's right, I can have them go to, go to see that.
Unless you put in for the position, of course.
I didn't think of that.
Do you really think that that will happen?
No. I guess that's why I really didn't think of it. He still knows the way unless it changes.
I will move, move to.
Motion, Dan?
You're still welcome.
I'm gonna first move to close the hearing, uh, on the approval of the FY fifteen classification plan.
Seconded by Mr. Sexton. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero.
Move the Board of Selectmen to approve the amendment to the FY fifteen classification plan by removing the quote assistant town manager slash administrative services unquote position and adding the quote administrative services director unquote position.
Marcy seconds the motion. Any discussion? All those in favor? Five zero. Um, well, we have next some proposed charter changes. I've got a copy of the, uh.
Yes.
Charter as it exists over the weekend.
And I have two versions. I have the bold and cross-out if you wanna really see what's changed. Um, just to backtrack a little, um, the board has gone over this in the past, but I think John Arena was absent.
Mm-hmm.
And there were some issues that were raised that were desired to have a full board. a full board.
There was at least one thing that we did need to take up again.
Yeah. So I don't know how you want to proceed through this where you've already been through it.
So I had a couple of general things that I'm wondering how to put forward. So one is that there's a bunch of places within here where we have these things like under two point four amended, November twenty fourth, two thousand and fourteen. I'm wondering if we can put those at the end, similar to the way that the current zoning bylaw works, so that there's a table of all the amendments and you don't have to sort of read around those, particularly now while we're redoing this, this is an ideal time to kind of.
Well, to say it differently, when do they disappear? When does it become?
I've wondered about that myself because when you delete a section, do you leave the footnote in?
It makes sense for me to, that you would delete them now as you're redoing it, but if you can't do that, then I would move them to the end.
Where it's being recodified, that's a breadcrumb to tell you something changed.
Right.
Right. Have you guys discussed this at all before I joined?
You have a preference?
It, I would prefer that we get rid of them.
I'll ask town council.
So if town council says we can.
Streamline it, get rid of as many as we can and put it in a better format so it doesn't interrupt.
Or to say it differently, if they don't serve any obvious purpose.
As an appendix bar, not as.
Maybe.
Yeah.
Or just at the end.
Yeah, something, yeah, get it off the main body.
There are two other general things that I have around this. One is that right now the definitions are in section eight, but they're sort of not at the end. If we could put them at the end or at the, you know, someplace where they're.
Beginning of the end.
They're easy to find, make sense to me. They're kind of in the middle of section eight, which doesn't make a lot of sense to me. And the other one's a much bigger one, which is that right now we have this thing in, and I know that it's been clarified a little bit, but if you have seven days or less, it's business days. If it's more than seven days, it's regular days. I went through and did a search. It's very hard to actually tell. I would, I would move that we put business days for anything that is less than seven or up to seven so that it's very clear to anyone that's reading that section, they don't have to go back and try and figure out the timing of it. Or we would take that out. And there's at least one place where I think it's very confusing. So there's one spot where it says it has to do with the public, the budget and it's not less than seven days nor more than fifteen days. So the first one is in business days and the second one is in calendar days. The first one actually, when you do seven days, it could be up to twelve or thirteen because of the timing of it, right? If you've got, if you start on a Thursday, you've got a holiday on Monday. So you've got Friday, Saturday, Sunday, Monday. Now you go into the next week, you like go through two different weekends. So I would recommend that we either look at those places where we have seven days and figure out, does it need to be business days? Does it need to be some set number of days that's more than seven?
The point is you want it to be explicit and not by reference.
I want it to be explicit and not something where you have to kind of figure it out and know this little secret code that's there, that is in there, but it's hard to find.
Well, I can tell you, first coming on to town meeting, that it took me at least two years to figure that out and I suspect I'm not alone.
Right.
So making it explicit is a way of kind of simplifying it for.
Absolutely. Well, and in this one place here, this is really interesting because it's related to the budget and the school committee budget and a public hearing has to happen not less than seven days nor more than fifteen days following such publication, which just seems strange. Why don't you just say at least fifteen days after you have the hearing? Like why, what's the magic in saying it's seven days after and?
Oh, I see. But they don't want a public hearing shotgun immediately after so that nobody's had a chance to digest.
It just, it just seems odd to me, but.
That one example is awkward because the seven and the fifteen become squished much closer together.
It becomes more like twelve and fifteen is what it does.
Exactly.
So.
I'd have no problem with making it explicit.
Well, what I thought is if you had to leave it in there, I'd make it eight days to fifteen.
You could say calendar days in that section.
Eight to fifteen calendar days and just then it's more than seven and it's, you know.
So the idea would be that the term days means days the town halls open equals business days.
Eight five, this was an issue we discussed quite a lot.
Because business days are businesses, but town halls closed on Fridays.
We don't, we don't use the term business day anymore in the charter.
We took it out, okay.
But if you look under eight five behind.
We do use it.
It shouldn't, there shouldn't be a phrase business day anywhere in the charter anymore. Now this.
But what I'm saying is that doesn't make sense though to do that.
Okay, well, that's, yeah, that's different. Now it's just, what does a day mean? And this is, you can read it. You know, if it's seven days or less, it means days the town halls open.
And town halls open, which is like a business day.
Okay.
That's, I mean, what you can do is change it so you define.
So anytime you see anything in the charter.
And actually, I think it says business days, days that town halls open.
We took that out.
Took it out, okay.
But we took it out since I showed you the last version we've met since.
I would say that this is, this is still not resolved then. In whatever way it needs to be resolved, it just needs to be clear to people because this is not inherently obvious.
Peter always felt strongly for clarity's sake that it was best served to have the seven or less, eight or more in one section and then it became obvious to somebody, I think to him because he was so schooled in it, but to anyone else, it is so non-obvious.
I personally don't see the reason why you don't use calendar days throughout.
I would just use calendar days throughout and just figure out what, how many calendar days do you want to allow for this?
Right, exactly.
Because seven, seven, seven days town hall is open can be eleven days.
There are a couple of topics, such as when you need to get to town hall and it doesn't work.
Absolutely, right.
Did you discuss this more, I know what we've discussed in the last couple of months, but.
I think this, this thing should stay the way it is quite.
The way it is now?
Yeah. Because when you start taking referendums or type on several of, it does get confusing.
Yeah, I will.
Well, it's still going to be confusing if you're doing referendums.
I think if I'm not mistaken, I think it still goes back to state law on referendums, that's why.
So what was the point to have it as seven or less or seven or more?
There's a lot of things in the charter and in state law where seven is the key. Seven days is just.
So is seven days actual calendar days now?
Well, it doesn't say in state law. So in the charter, you assume it's calendar by default. So the charter is trying to be more lenient.
Right.
When this thing says seven, we're trying to cut you all a break and saying only when town halls open do those days count.
But see, and that's the problem. And that's the problem is it, it works for Mr. Brown because he knows this very well. It does not work for your average citizen who does not know the in and out minutia of our charter and most people won't. And so you're going to wind up, you know, people aren't going to.
But it's actually more lenient to them than they might expect.
Yeah, and.
Maybe the confusion won't be quite as great.
Well, but there's a number of different places where we have seven business days and they're not just related to our.
Can you cite a few?
Yeah.
The seven day clause is littered throughout the charter.
There's a whole, have a whole series of them here. So it's town meeting membership, town meeting sessions, vacancies, establishments of boards and committees. Referendum procedures, removal procedures, finance, recall procedures, removal of employee boards. So it's, there's just, you know, several of them.
And the issue is some portion of those seven days, we can't change because that's what state law says.
Right.
Some of them we can. I'm sure something to do with school committee and the budget, we can change all that. So the question is whether you want to cut people a break on the things we can't change by saying, hard luck, it's just seven calendar days. That's the real issue and the charter has attempted to cut that break, albeit caused confusion.
I would, I would just say, you know, it's.
Could I make a compromise?
Yeah.
Could we, could we just reference, maybe this is too difficult, but reference anywhere with an asterisk that if a day is referenced, to go, for those that are reading, go back and check this other section so you know what a day is.
That would be easy enough.
It's the price of an asterisk every time there were days.
That's, sounds good.
I think that works. Qualify the paragraph.
We can just, after each seven, seven, seven days parentheses, C-section, whatever.
Or less, seven or less, right. Seven or less. I think, yeah, I think that's fine.
At least they have something they can follow.
Right.
Which is what you're giving.
Right, there's no, otherwise, Mr. Brown knows it because he has it up here, but most people don't have.
Why has somebody's palm up and saying, so when can I do this?
The years of experience, so.
This week was last week, next week.
So are we empowered to do this? Is this a suggestion?
This is a suggestion.
Board of Selectmen input to the charter.
Yeah, I'm taking notes.
Okay.
Depending on whether we have town meeting next Monday or meeting next Monday.
Had it been your committee appointed, you would have had the power.
You do not have a meeting next Monday.
Yes, we do.
The charter.
Yes, we do.
What?
Well, possibly. One, one section I read that I, I still trip over is section four dot fourteen, which is other boards and committees. And that is, there's a new right by any of the elected boards or committees to establish and appoint or dissolve boards or committees underneath them for a specific purpose. I don't know if that's the definition of an ad hoc committee or not. If it were, I would assume it would say ad hoc committee.
We decided, mostly I decided, town council said it was okay, to stop calling them all these different terms like standing and ad hoc.
Okay.
Call it a board or committee.
Is it subject, so.
You can, as, as the authority appointing it, you can call it whatever you want. You can call it ad hoc if you like that.
In doing so, is that so created board subject to the same open meeting laws and open meeting as the parent?
Yes, and further, it doesn't say this, but it's implied, if you create a board or committee, you can create a sunset clause and town council highly advises you do.
Can you make that mandatory?
Should that not be in here?
I'm not sure if you can make it mandatory, we didn't ask them.
Well, it seems counterintuitive to make it that it's a possibility and not to at least illuminate the reader that that's a possibility.
I would say leave it as is because you've got, like department has many subcommittees and they may not want a sunset clause on it.
We're not obligating them to have one, but we should let them know that one is possible and that.
Well, I think that big by communication. Let them run their business down there, you guys.
And I, I think it's one thing to have elected boards be setting up a bunch of other committees, but if you have appointed boards and committees, we already have an awful lot of boards and committees, but you suddenly have them.
They can't do it.
Oh, no, it just said elected.
It's only elected, okay.
We did talk about that.
So when it's written this way.
Okay, yes, okay, because they have, way too much.
Committee on committees.
Okay.
Yeah, I'd like to bring up the establishing warrant article issue regarding the number of members of board of selectmen that should be allowed to do that.
Remember where that is, Bill?
Chapter.
Two or something?
Two or more.
Two or more, yeah. Let me make the arguments on both sides and suggest what might be a compromise here. The two or more allows a minority to perhaps bring a controversial issue that the full board wouldn't support and I respect it. That was probably the intent of the framers. My argument has always been that when the term board of selectmen, just board of selectmen appears under a warrant article, it to a certain degree implies sponsorship of the article and support of the article. Not necessarily means that, but I think it is interpreted that way by town meeting. I have seen warrant articles, and Bill, you probably remember this in the past, with the words by courtesy underneath.
Yes.
Is there a way of putting that concept together with this two or more? Because that would satisfy my concern.
Does that term mean?
Means by, we did it by courtesy to the other two.
On behalf of.
Because you might have been doing it on behalf of the citizen, for instance, the party that did the petition for the January.
I've started putting in the warrant report some explanation of that, but yours is a better idea.
Board of Selectmen by courtesy.
I think the better answer is for A, however many members need to support it, that should just say board of selectmen. But if you're doing it for any one of these other reasons, it should say courtesy of the board of selectmen.
I'm not following.
If you look under two, one, three A.
Yeah.
That's something that two or more, or maybe you're going to change that, if you want to bring an article. So that's truly a board of selectmen sponsored article.
Actually, let me take.
Wouldn't that be a.
It's a minority, how can it be?
I don't know why we would not have a majority.
Why do you want to keep the two?
If I can just say something.
What's your perspective?
I think that right now, the way that you're thinking of this is that the warrant belongs to the board of selectmen and I would argue that the warrant belongs to town meeting.
I don't argue that.
And so things get put on that and the board of selectmen may be obligated to put things on there, but that doesn't necessarily mean that they are sponsoring it and so.
Well, I would think anything we're obligated to put on, we're prepared to speak.
Why wouldn't you say sponsored by select person A and select person B or worse than that effect?
Yeah, just put the names of the people.
You could certainly, you could certainly do that under A if it's not unanimous, you could say, you can give some explanation.
Are we empowered to do that by the language of the charter? Is that just up to the person writing up the warrant?
Yeah. So under B, C, D and E, you could go to a different format and explain more thoroughly. It's not just board of selectmen.
Yeah.
And the other option is you can always make a report that says, we put this on the warrant in, you know, and we actually have voted and we are not in favor of it.
Yeah, if town council says to me, no, you can't do that, that's crazy. It just has to say board of selectmen. The very first sentence under the background can say, well, board of selectmen put this on the warrant because the conservation commission asked them to.
That's a backup, but I mean, it'd be much more straightforward.
Well, let's debate the wisdom of the two or more versus a majority, which actually just strike A and then B would cover that.
Well, in both cases, you have less than a unanimous. You may have a, what is the, the term, concurring opinion? You may have a group that, actually, it's a divergent opinion. You might have three people that say yes, two that say no, but you, I guess that is a majority, so that goes on by the board. But I'd very much like to know if it's, if it's two, that who they are is separate and distinct from the backup, just for clarity's sake. A lot of times you just get the warrant, you don't necessarily get all the backup.
And I think that's a legal question that only Ray can say, yeah, you can do it or no you can't.
Bill, do you remember the origin of why that went in there back in eighty-four when it was?
No, I don't. I lost it. The board has put along a couple items that I brought forward.
Yeah, I know that.
I got to you, Bob. I've got to say it's.
By courtesy, right?
Courtesy anyway, so.
Do you, do you want to continue arguing with the four again or are you done?
Well, I'd like us to take a position on whether we're happy keeping that or should we change, either strike it or change it to three or more. I'm still leaning toward the three or more unless there's a compelling reason.
I have just a question. It seems as though everything else, and I'm new to this, so everything that we vote on rises or falls based on the majority. Strikes me that that's, that's what democracy is about. Why is it here that a minority can act on behalf of the board?
I think the answer's in B through E and that is you'd be compelled.
That's a whole different thing.
But you'd be compelled to do it anyway, even though you, you don't have the sink or swim right with any of the others.
This is, but this is not actually taking a vote. This is saying, we want to send something to town meeting to take a vote. And so what I would say is you've got two members of the board who have been duly elected by the town to represent the town and two of them feel strongly enough to send it to town meeting. That's all.
Well, I mean technically, shouldn't it be one? Yeah, that's right where I was going. I mean, following that logic, any, any one of us should be able.
I mean, that should be actually the argument.
I mean, that should be actually the, the argument. Do we want to have it as one or, or three? Does he want a majority or, or simple, just, you know, courtesy of one or less?
One is, you have no filter. You have no filter at all.
Yeah, you don't have no filter at all, right.
Anyone's pet peeve ends up on the warrant, and so two is a big rush.
I wouldn't be in favor of one.
Five, five guarantees, something of significance has got, and that's, that's one reason to make a distinction between the entire board versus a minority.
Is, is this, is the, the minority members arguing, you're, you two guys primarily, I think, that this is to preserve the interest of, of a subsegment of the board to bring something important forward, or is it that you want to help somebody get a petition article on?
I think it's more, we're the conduit to get it on the warrant. There are nine other reasons why they get it on.
Conduit from whom? Another board, another person?
It could be any of the above.
But they, but people have that petition route, and I don't like to see us serving that role, per se. I think it's a lot cleaner if we allow the petition process to take place.
I see your point. See, now your point is, there are plenty of other ways.
There are plenty of other ways.
Minority views to make their way in the warrant.
And we just saw that a very nicely constructed warrant article was in fact presented and a hundred signatures. And it only takes ten signatures of the regular and subsequent.
I see your point.
Yeah, I mean, the only, the only argument.
I see that diminishes the value of having the two.
I, I, I agree with you. The only argument that, you know, you may want to take into consideration, I know part of the, the process is making sure that the process is just that,
that the, the public avenue process for this, but is there any avenue that there may need to be, I hate to say it again, but an eleventh hour decision that, that, that could, that this clause could actually play a role in, where the other process can't play out and we need to get it done?
If there really is a, you know, a public safety concern or something. I can't think of the scenario right now, and that's what I'm trying to say.
Is there a scenario that we're not thinking of under which A would be necessary or needed for the town?
I'm just hesitant to make it more restrictive personally than, than it is today. I mean, we're essentially saying we're gonna, we're gonna restrict something more than it is today. You, you, you seem like you, you had something to say.
Well, my comment is, excuse me, the way this is worded and has been practiced, any of those B, C, D, and E could come up to you at seven fifty-nine when the warrant closes at eight and say, here it is. Now, if it's a petition, the town clerk has had to say it's in good form.
Right.
One would hope if it's a petition or any other method, the town council has weighed in, but we don't always know that. So, it's nice to have an avenue where the selectmen can step in and make it a more public process. Presumably, other boards do that if they're coming to you, so that shouldn't be a problem. But if residents are doing it, they have no way to do it in public. So, whether that means one of you should allow that public process to happen or three, that's up to you. But petitioned articles to me are troubling because they haven't gone through a public process.
That's my main complaint.
Now, you can do that after the fact. You have to close it on the warrant, as this one, you have no choice. And all of a sudden, you need to then say, okay, now we need to fit it into our schedule before town meeting of getting this agenda item, noticing of public care, and whether we call it that or not. It's cleaner if the petition folks can just go through you through a different process.
Unless.
They can, they can go through A. And, and if they have one of your sympathies and you have the right to do it, then it'll be an agenda item, it'll be discussed in public.
Well, could we stipulate that if that happens, that there be wording on the warrant that says this is by courtesy?
That's, that's the question for council as to how's.
And that, that is the only condition under which I'll support keeping this the way it is.
That, that completely makes sense to me. I, I, I mean, I, we say it's going to be a majority, I'm o, I'm okay with that. I just, this is one of those where I think, I don't know of a compelling reason why we have to change it. Yeah, I, I don't think.
What happened in closing our fall town meeting warrant is a very good example. We almost didn't close the warrant. If we'd had one more abstention that night, you wouldn't have a fall town meeting.
So how, so how would this have helped that story?
If it were three or more, then that would not have gone on the warrant. It would have been rejected summarily right there.
Well, theoretically, that's true, but practically speaking, you had three votes in favor of it.
And by the way, you just got petitioned, so you got outdone anyway, so.
It's not about being outdone.
That's fine. That's the right way to.
Yeah, there's nothing wrong with that at all.
I guess the petition.
It's a matter of putting the label of board of selectmen on it is a problem, right?
Right. From a practical standpoint, what happened here, what happened that causes this discussion is that, you know, we had one vote, we had two votes abstaining. We had two votes in favor.
To close the warrant.
And we had one vote that voted in favor so that we would have a tall, a fall town meeting.
A fall town.
Because he was the one that understood the parliamentary.
Right.
Fix that we had put ourselves in, and which.
And I'm not quite sure what the remedy would be, since you're supposed to have a town meeting by charter.
But that doesn't have the.
What would be without warrants?
It'd be like the ten AM liquor store.
A warrantless town meeting.
So one reason, one reason to make it three, I'm going to give you a good reason, is if you just have it, is in a case where an unpopular warrant is put forth, that you don't put yourself in that jeopardy position again. It's the only case I can think of. It guarantees that you have three in favor.
Something that has not gone through the proper process.
Right. If it's not, if it doesn't come to, if it comes to us by B through E, it's by.
Then we have to close the warrant.
One of the things I find interesting, you know, to your point, Kevin, is that I'm yet to find anything that, other than this, that you can do the, in the eleventh hour, that everything else has a prescribed amount of days and it's all.
Seven?
It's all, you know, very cloudy, in a cloudy way, very clear. I mean, it's, it's, it's regulated, okay? This particular thing that happened.
It's right here. It's this word. It's not defined.
Yeah.
And I don't remember if we discussed that.
Time limit.
It would seem to me that.
Means by the time we close it, I would imagine.
You would want it to have, let's just pick a number, two weeks in advance so town council can look at it.
Yeah, I mean, so for example, we chose not to, even though we were asked by a number of citizens to take a position on the, the new historic district.
Yeah.
We were asked to take that position. We said, no, because we felt like we wanted to hear from the public before we were willing to do that. Now, I thought that was a proper way for us to go about that, and then, you know.
But that's not placing it on the warrant.
But that's not placing it, it's voting on it.
That's just voting on it, which is different. See, you have to separate the two.
I know this, I know this, they're valid and blind, but they are different.
There's a principle involved here, though.
But you're, you're marrying the two is the problem.
I think, I think the principle marries them.
If you're saying, if I'm, if I'm not in favor of it, I'm not going to vote for the warrant, and that's, that's potentially a problem, I think.
Well, I come back to, I will say this, that fortunately, we were able to, before the, before that particular warrant in question, before we were in town meeting, we took a vote on it because we put it there, okay?
Yeah.
Yeah.
And that vote was zero, five, zero, if I remember correctly. We voted against it.
Yep.
Right.
Okay? The problem with eleventh hour stuff is, you know, it, it sends, I think it sends a weird message.
Well, you're causing town meeting to get prepared for an issue that we're not even prepared to present to them, and, and I don't blame them for getting upset with that because they spend their time reading the warrant report and figuring out how they're going to vote.
Actually, A and B are in conflict with each other. B says any elected or appointed town board or committee, which would have to be a majority of that board.
Right.
Right.
But A doesn't have to be a majority.
No, the selectmen have a privilege that the others don't have.
Right, but the logic behind B, I guess, is it's the will of the majority. If I understand it, we're going to sponsor a bill. I get the point around three, and any of us could take, could exercise D and go get the signatures.
Right.
Oh, yeah.
Yeah, I mean, you know, this is not a hill I want to die on.
Right, no.
Oh, I don't, I don't either, but I just wanted to.
But I will tell you, it's just a principle standpoint.
I, I, I just wanted to have the discussion with all five of us.
But I want more to take a position on whether.
With four, so.
I, I'm going to move to recommend that the board, the board still can recommend to the charter committee, we strike two thirteen A.
And it's entirely?
It's an entirety?
Is it covered?
Because then it's covered under B.
Right.
Oh, I see what you're saying.
Because we're an elected board, so.
Or, or you can change it to three or more, whichever.
No, it's better to strike.
Well, you better strike it if you're going to, if, if that's, if that's what you're thinking.
You know something, I, I do hear what Marcy's saying, though. I mean, look, like I said, this is not a hill I'm ready to die on. It's.
Do you accept my motion, or?
Uh, do I have a, anyone accept? Do I have a second on the motion? Dan's proposing to strike A, so it would make us subject to a majority of the board.
I'll take the motion.
Okay, we have a second. Any further discussion?
Yeah, yes. I, I, I have.
Further discussion?
Well, yeah, I was going to say, then discussion. I have to second it.
Motion on the floor.
It sounded like the bee contest.
The what?
The bee contest.
The bee contest last night.
The birds.
I do have a bright with you for closing it before we had a chance to close that out, because we were ready to get done with it.
Any further discussion, Dan?
Yeah, I, you know, there's a side of me that wants the citizens to always be able to find their way. And so, have we closed that door? Or have we just turned two into three? Have we turned A into a three number instead of a?
We would two, we would essentially be turning two into three for this board.
I could use Mr. Brown's statement, which is, if it ain't broke, don't fix it.
Well.
And it's been like this for however long, but.
Marcy, I almost broke something big time back in October, with all due respect.
Actually, the ten days before annual or subsequent town meeting, we did in fact do that back in the last charter change that we had. At that time, you had to have a hundred signatures, citizen's signatures anyways. And my argument at that time was, well, if we're going to have a town meeting, why put the town?
Yeah.
Everybody threw in town clerk's time to certify a hundred signatures when you're going to have a town meeting.
Right.
If it wasn't a.
So why is the special different? Why is that a hundred?
Because.
Because then anybody could get a special going, right?
Yeah.
Right. We know we're going to have these two every year.
You know you're going to have these two anyway, but.
That's not a big deal.
And my, my argument at that time.
You're going to start taxing them, having special election.
You can't cause a special election by having an article. That goes on the next.
No, I know, I know.
Oh, okay.
But.
So, so actually, that doesn't make any sense then. That doesn't, that doesn't make any sense.
No, it doesn't.
At that time.
No, that just makes it harder.
At that time, they had to have a hundred signatures to get around the.
No, we're losing track here.
Guys, it's getting late, so why don't we stay on the motion?
The, the, my only, my only point in, in regards to it, and I, I definitely understand where you're saying it comes from, you know, it does give an air of, of support from the board of selectmen.
It does.
Is this something that we can, I don't know if I'm making a amendment to your proposal.
We're discussing.
Is this something that we can wait until we talk to town council to see if we can reword it and have that left in there? So that, so that, that it can be specific, so that this is not, this is not the board putting this forward, this is the board, you know, whatever, what term you used earlier?
By courtesy.
By courtesy.
Where you're just making a recommendation. Your vote can be completely illogical and say any of wants on.
Yeah, it looks like it's going that way.
In order to make it really clear. If we can't do this, then we want to do this.
Okay.
I'm only going to lay it on the table until we have such a ruling, sure, then I may withdraw it.
Well.
I just don't, I, I just don't want us to, to make a recommendation that may have some unintended consequences. That's, that's all.
I'd say it's ninety-nine percent likely you do not have another meeting before the language will be finalized by the charter committee. So whatever verbal assistance you want to give them, including town council, I'll give. So if council.
We're not voting to change it.
We're not voting to do anything, man, just the recommendation.
You're voting to recommend, so I can reflect your conversation.
They're going to do what they want to do anyway.
And I can ask council, you know, can we fiddle around with the board of selectmen language and say, as, you know, as a courtesy for whatever? And if we can't, maybe you want to then address something here, but I'm not clear in what you'd want to do.
I understand. So the two threads that we've described is B already describes us in the majority, A describes us in the minority.
Right. Right.
Subject only to noting that it's.
Courtesy.
Miss, well, no, it's Mr. X and Miss Y or select person.
Or, or courtesy to someone else.
Or two name selectmen can put it on.
Yeah.
I have.
Then I'm, then I'm fine with it. And the, well, my view is, that satisfies the identification of those two individuals separate from the board as a whole. I think the one gap is this timely thought. If I play back the warrant article that we just had back, I think on the twenty-eighth, that wasn't observed. That was literally an eleventh hour, no Mary.
Yes, correct.
That's what broke. We're trying to fix it by doing this, but that's what broke.
But the time was the broke.
If we'd have had another week, it wouldn't have happened.
I mean, quite frankly, I think the, the thing that broke, though, is saying, I'm going to vote down the warrant if I don't agree with all the articles that we put on there.
True.
Which is different than, and that's, that's more of a, a board of selectmen procedural thing.
Yeah, that was more point of order, should I say.
So more time we would have recognized the, the problem that that created. It wasn't as busy at the time to all of us.
Maybe now, I'm just saying, longer term, though, with other people, but, you know, I mean.
I agree. Any way to make time, make.
And, and I know John's got something to say.
Um, I just, I never vote my rights away, ever. And I have certain rights here as a selectman. And so for that reason, I think I would vote against your motion, Dan. Just because, you know, if I have a right, you know, I don't give them away. I mean, I, you know, I, I, maybe it's just a philosophical, you know. It's a philosophical outlook that I have. I do think that we have to be very attentive to all subjects timely. And I think we, you know, we, we, we probably, this particular group of five people on this board, given the circumstances, might have handled that last thing that's causing all this discussion differently. And so, that being the case, I, I, I'm going to trust that rather than legislate away a, a right that I currently have as an elected selectman.
Can I offer a substitute motion, or throw the one I made? I would leave A as worded and add, add some language to the effect that.
Name selectmen?
No, uh, let's see. Not to, so not, not to take the place of B, C, D, and A, though there's some valid reason for two members of the board need to do something. I don't want to see it short-circuiting any of those other things.
I'm not sure.
I don't follow that.
I think there's always a no.
No words, if there, there's another pathway for another board to vote it on, they should do so. If there's a petition pathway, that should be followed instead of the two. That any one hundred or more, that should be followed, or any other person or entity, that should be followed. No words, if this is an issue purely of concern to the board, that selectmen feel very strongly respecting John's argument about rights. I don't want to see this short-circuiting other things.
I think that's hard to enforce. I, I think that would be hard to know necessarily.
I think one of the advantages of having it the way it is is, you know, imagine a board that you've appointed that's gone rogue, and they won't put an article on, and you want them to. You might want to keep that option out there.
Kind of like the sixty percent rule, yeah.
And the way this is worded now, all subjects timely, because of A, that means only two of you have to agree that it was timely, however it was delivered. And that's fine. That's just, that's just the fact.
Rather than debate the meaning of the word timely, is there a vehicle to specify some minimum time?
The way it's put in there now, it's up to your discretion as board, but only two of you. So if you want it, it'd be more restrictive if a number goes in there as opposed to your, your decision.
Well.
Which would also, which would also lessen.
Or, actually, up to the, up to the charter committees.
Well, you can certainly lay out as a policy for all, anyone, that in B, C, D, and E, these are our rules. If we don't see something forty days in advance, ten days in advance, whatever you like, we're just not going to do it.
The frustrating thing about this last vote, there's nothing about that discussion that had to be done urgent at all.
No.
It was completely manufactured or insane.
It was.
And so, I'm trying to think now, is there a case where putting a nominal delay or suggested delay, pick a number, twenty-four hours, seven days?
I think you can have that as a board of selectmen policy.
Yeah, I think it doesn't need to be.
Doesn't have to be in the charter.
Doesn't have to be in the charter.
We can determine what timely is as a board of selectmen.
All right, let's, let's, let's not, well, you didn't accept the substitute anyway.
Now, there's some times where state law is going to trump you.
I, I, I did like the, the two parts. I know we're going late here. I did like the two parts as.
As far as the.
Two or more named board of selectmen.
That's about the only change I would like to.
I, I like that. I think that's fine.
Would, would be good, because then it, then it removes the, you know, the part that it's the entire board, and it's, no, these two members have decided.
It doesn't change any of the rights that are currently.
Right.
Right.
Is that an acceptable thing with town council?
We'll see, can make their recommendations.
We'll make it.
Dan, you have a motion on the floor to strike A. Any further discussion?
Uh, well, I withdrew it.
You withdrew.
The secondary.
You did withdraw.
Okay, so I think.
You want to withdraw the second, secondary, or are you going to?
Yeah.
Okay.
That's not going anywhere.
I think this devolves to, we just want to recommend that we note A differently than.
Two or more named members of the board of selectmen.
And as far as D goes, do we want to ask them to revisit that and say, why do we need a hundred here?
I think you should.
I don't, honestly, I don't see.
You know, shouldn't it be, shouldn't it be ten?
No, because we don't, them calling a special town meeting just.
Well, they can't, they can't just, yeah.
Well, they can't call a special town meeting.
They can't call it just by having a petition.
All it says is the next scheduled town meeting. You schedule town meetings.
We're just making it harder if someone to put it on there.
Technically, there is no January town meeting.
I wouldn't mess with that. I think Bill gave the reason.
What was the, I, I missed that, Bill. What was the reason?
I think the subsequent town meeting, at one time, clarified as a special town meeting.
Yeah.
It was called a special town meeting, and I think when.
As opposed to.
The argument was to me that we're holding a town meeting by charter anyways. Why make it more difficult, not only for the citizens, but for town clerk? She has to verify all the signatures.
Well, why do we want to do this with a special town meeting and make it more difficult for her?
Yeah.
I, I have no idea what that comes in.
I mean, now, now it seems like that's an obsolete, because we have, we have subsequent anyways, like that's an obsolete.
Maybe by state law, I don't know. Yeah, but suggested maybe by state law.
And you don't have to worry about that. You make whatever recommendation you want.
That's been there forever, Kevin. It's been there for fifty years.
But if it's made, been made obsolete by the subsequent town meeting, not, no longer being a special.
No, special. Special requiring orders has been there for many, many, many moons.
Right, but that was before subsequent town meeting was there. That's what Bill's saying. The reason why they did it that way is because subsequent used to be called a special town meeting.
I was going to say.
Well, now, if we having it anyways, well, and, and that was the purpose to have the hundred on there is for that, what is now the subsequent, which they were calling the special, doesn't, hasn't it, how's still lived its usefulness?
Not, not, subsequent's not the only special we have. We're having, we had a special in September.
We have, we have a month.
You would want that to have a hundred signatures, right?
But, but, but.
Right? It's coming from a citizen.
But the thing is, you're missing what, what Bob's saying. So Bob is saying, you don't, just because you have a petition that has a hundred signatures on it, does not mean you have to call a special meeting. The special meeting is up to us to determine when we're gonna have, right?
That's true.
So.
I know that.
So, if you're, you're gonna just say, at the next town meeting we have, be it special, subsequent, or annual, you get ten signatures.
Shall be placed.
If.
Wait a minute, shall placed on such warrants?
The next scheduled.
The next schedule.
Next schedule.
Put this on the next train, it doesn't tell you.
Where's it say that?
Right there.
So it, it's, we're putting an extra bear, barrier on, just for special town meetings and not for the annual or subsequent, and it doesn't.
Yeah, it, it.
It doesn't actually, all it does is take up town clerk's time.
And I'm just looking to say, I'm, I'm, I'm not saying one or the other, I'm just wondering.
I'll go on, if you go on me on A.
Well, I'm just, I'm just wondering why we have it. Is it something that we want to look at, is there, is there a reason for?
All right.
I, I don't know.
Does that change?
I'm not saying there's a good reason or not to have it, I just wanna.
Has that changed this warrant, this going on in January?
No.
No.
Have it discussed.
First of all, the charter hasn't changed.
That'd be all be subsequent to this.
But it would change potentially future.
No, no, what I'm saying is.
What it would have changed is the, the gun bylaw that, that's being proposed for this, for January, they only would have needed ten.
Well, now, we.
Right.
Or.
What's the A G sign?
Or they could have waited until the annual town meeting, right?
Right.
With ten.
Right.
But either, either way.
It gets a.
Yeah, I'm, I'm, I'm just curious to look at that to say, is that something that's needed now? Is it, is, is there a reason why it's in there, speci, one?
Is that something?
And two, have we outlived that reason, and do we need it?
One is ten and one is a hundred, it seems.
Maybe not. Could we recommend that the Charter Committee look at this and?
I think so.
And that's all I was looking to do, yeah.
I think, yeah, maybe we don't try.
I wasn't saying take a position on it, just say.
We just say, can the Charter Committee look at that, Bill?
Sure.
We'd look at it.
Could you talk about it?
I'd be curious to determine, you know, the, the background and.
We could look at anything.
I'd be curious to see the background of it, and if it's something that's needed still.
I'm always willing to listen, you know that.
It's, it's like, guys.
And we got a section of the board that we could put the word named in A, in A, two or more named members of the board.
I thought we already decided that.
Yep.
Okay, so it's, it's.
That's already been decided.
Are there any other comments in the charter?
No, ordered by.
There, there actually were some others based on what Bob had talked about. So there was one thing that was removing from the Board of Selectmen, something about having the executive powers of the town.
Um, that got.
Maybe that got put back in again?
That got clarified, so it clearly states you are the executive.
Okay. Okay, good.
Yeah.
It was kind of implied, but it needed to be stated.
Okay, but it wasn't stated, all right.
And there is a role for the board in the review of the budget now, that, in consultation with the, I think that went in a long time ago.
I think that, yeah, that went in a while ago.
Okay.
I have a question. Does a town meeting member need to live in the precinct they are representing, or just be a registered? It looks like you have to be a registered voter to be in town meeting. Because to be elected, you have to be a registered voter. But it doesn't actually say you have to live there. So if you went and got ten signatures from a different precinct, and they said, yes, we're happy to have you, because, quite frankly, we have throughout town a lot of precincts that don't have enough people, and then we have others where no one can get in.
We cannot do that.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that.
Well, where does it say that? I wasn't able to find that.
United States Supreme, United States Supreme Court, one man, one vote district.
Un, unlike Congress, right, where they can live, live outside their district, like Nicholas August, living.
Uh, yeah. Like all the Kennedy district. That, that was settled many years ago, Mass, in, in United States Supreme Court.
Okay.
Yeah, I think it started out in, in Springfield or that area.
Okay.
One man, one vote, Bob.
One somewhat related topic, just, you reminded me, let's discuss quickly. Um, the way it is now, a non-resident can be appointed to a Board or Committee by the selectman. You weren't here for that, I just wanted to make sure you get it.
Non-women, a non-registered resident, I thought you.
Non-resident.
Non-resident.
A non-resident?
Can be.
Why?
And there are.
Why?
That's, it doesn't, it doesn't limit volunteer boards, volunteer appointments, if the residents are ready.
Imagine you have a subject matter expert.
I mean, you might have a business in town.
Well, yeah.
You might have this, you know, that, talking about the cultural a, aspect that you were talking about earlier, where you have other businesses, you know, from other, other towns.
Yeah, a business in town, yeah.
That's a two-way sword, because you could get probably.
Yeah.
We've had this come up at a, at a recent board where a member has moved out of town, and some other members of the board said, well, doesn't this member have to resign? It's like, no. Well, bring it to the selectman, they, this, this shouldn't do. It's like, no, it's perfectly fine. But you ought to discuss it if you don't agree. But that's the way it is.
It is a little, if, since any board can have an associate member, and I presume it has no limit on the number of, like, who can show up and participate, it's not clear to me why you'd ever have a formalized membership on a, a committee where that wasn't.
I don't know why you'd be a voting member, I agree with that.
Uh, yeah, if you're not a resident.
As a non-resident?
As a non-resident.
I don't think it makes sense.
Don't understand why you would, when you could have an associate member.
We're not walling off the participation in any other way, this is purely to have a vote, and.
They can be an associate.
So is it right now that they can?
Associates are limited. If you look at this four fifteen, you have to have, it has to be in the bylaws specifying that a board has associates.
Right.
Or in the case of zoning bylaw, that's a state law.
But nowhere does it specify, it has to be a resident either.
No. No. Elected are the only ones, obviously.
Right.
Yeah.
Have to be a resident.
I'd be inclined, I can't, because I can't think of a good reason, and there appears to be more than equal opportunity for anyone to participate on an ad hoc basis. I can't think of a good reason to perpetuate this, or a problem that's created by eliminating it. Anyone feel differently?
No.
I'm, I agree.
Um, I'm, I can imagine, now, I'm trying to remember when you, when there was a tax classification subcommittee, I don't really remember what that was called, whether that was an ad hoc or whatever it was. But you may well want to appoint people who are not residents for specific purposes.
Would that be more from a consulting standpoint, right, so that's.
Well, a voting member. There was six people on that committee.
Oh, I see what you're saying, because they may not be able to have associates.
Yeah, Leo Kenny.
Two from the business committee.
Leo Kenny on the cons copy, he was from out of town, yeah.
Right.
Right.
So there are instances where you may want to specifically have someone that doesn't live in Redding, or at least.
That has the expertise.
Yeah.
Or you say all boards, committees, and commissions can have associates. Would be the, would be the alternate, and then you could take it out. Because then you could still get consultation on, from there.
That's like all boards appointing boards.
Yeah, yeah.
But then you. I'm not aware that there's a problem, other than there's certainly some misunderstanding in some boards. And it, it makes sense, that default thought should be, you have to be a resident. That's just not the case. And, and another example of where you wouldn't want that to be the case, in, in quite a lot of circumstances, there are employees who are not residents who are on boards. Board of Assessor. The chief appraiser is often the chair of the Board of Assessors. They don't have to live in that town. Um, there's, there's a board, there's, I think it's the Audit Committee right now. They're going to have a resignation, and they're wondering if they should nominate an employee who does not live in Redding. So that's another example where that may be the wish of the board.
Okay, so there are good reasons why there are great problems. That's why we talk about it.
Um, Bob, does the current wording allow FinCom to investigate records without putting it on the town warrant now? Or do we still have that problem in there?
Yeah, I think it was passed.
Yes, that was passed.
Okay.
Any other comments?
No, thanks, board.
Um, there was one other thing. So establishment of boards and committees, no finance committee member shall be an elected or appointed town officer, an employee, um, you know, other than town meeting. But my understanding is the proposed building committee is talking about having members of FinCom on there, so wouldn't that be a contradiction in that?
Let me look.
It can be a liaison, I don't know about a voting member.
So here are the five permanent members. Well, there's the. They're not meant to be anyone from FinCom, I would say, here's their.
Okay.
Here's their background.
All right, so it's not, okay, then it's not a problem, okay.
But would it preclude having a FinCom member?
Um.
It just doesn't specify.
Well, they wouldn't be able to.
They can't because of the charter.
Be a voting member, they could be, they could be a liaison, right, they could be a.
Non-voting.
Non-voting participant, but.
Yeah.
They're appointed by the chairman of the board, the selectman, chairman of the school, committee moderator, and the moderator.
That's, this is a proposal again. That's also part of January Town Meeting.
I, I just wanted to make sure there wasn't a contradiction there, that's all. All right.
Any other comments?
Do we have to get a clarification on the. The finish of Town Meeting, applying for the open meeting law? I put it in there.
Um, Town Council says that any committee of Town Meeting must follow open meeting law. And I know you don't agree with that. And he knows you don't agree with that.
It isn't that I don't agree with it. The district attorney, the attorney general, the, uh, this Commonwealth has said, any committees of Town Meeting exempt from the open meeting laws. And that's why I specifically wanted it.
Did you make the citation, Bill? I mean, it's kind of important to have a specific citation.
I'll ask him again, but I know I've asked him.
Well, uh, I will bring it up.
He said only, oh, only Town Meeting itself is exempt from open meeting law.
If you know of a specific ruling.
Yeah.
Produce it.
It's in the open meeting laws that we just had. In fact, I, I got a specific insert from the district attorney's office, uh, attorney general, because I asked that particular question. I, I feel it should be in the charter, regardless of whether Town Council agrees or not, because Town Council's come and go, Attorney General's come and go. And if it's in the charter.
Remember you made that point.
There's no harm, in my opinion, there's no harm with being in there.
Actually, we have one other charter thing. So, the bylaw committee, right now, there's nothing in here about what the bylaw committee's purpose is.
Yeah, I.
Actually, I'm so glad you reminded me about them.
The bylaw committee really should actually have some very specific direction, like they're checking to make sure something's consistent with town law, that it's consistent within itself. It should not be the forum for people's public, personal opinions to be made in front of Town Meeting, and unfortunately, that is the way it's been used, and I, I, I'm very strongly opposed to that.
Yeah.
Yes.
Um, I was at a bylaw committee meeting some point in the last few weeks, and didn't bring up that subject, but brought up the question, would they be fine to only review general bylaws and not zoning bylaws, because zoning bylaws go through an excruciating process, and they supported that.
Don't we do?
They supported that. So, I mean, the bylaw committee had a whole night all by itself for the zoning rewrite, and actually, they have the zoning. So they're always looking at zoning bylaws, and they all agreed, why are we doing this? So they're gonna suggest that change to the Charter Committee.
But I, I would also recommend that we do.
But yours is a different point.
Mine is a different point, which is to give them a very specific purpose, it's not just, you're reading this and then you're stating what your personal opinion is.
Can we point them?
Yes, we do.
You do, and.
Don't we give everybody?
We don't, we actually, we actually, as, as a board, we're at fault in, in.
They're pointed by an appointment committee, right? Appointment committee.
Appointment committee.
Yeah.
Appointment committee, well, the appointment committee should give them a purpose.
This topic came up certainly in the Charter Committee, because there's different feelings in that, in that group as well. And, um, they asked Town Council, what's your experience? And he said, it's obsolete all over the map. Um, some people try to define it, some people leave it quite loose. He said, there is absolutely no standard for this in the common.
But that there is no standard doesn't argue that we have.
We shouldn't have.
No, but people were asking, is there a best practice? And the answer is no.
Is there any practice?
There's not even a common practice.
Yeah.
This, it's very much an individualized taste kind of thing.
I've raised this at the Charter Committee meeting myself, I've also raised this prior to becoming a, a member of the board, and I can't describe to anyone what the bylaw committee does other than use their best judgment in terms of the intent and construction of the language, but they're not compelled to do any of that. Uh, Bill, is the Charter Committee, is there a sense in the Charter Committee that this is a void that needs to be filled?
I can't say that.
I, I think there's a split.
Yeah, it, it's kind of split, so. So we really don't. The one that I think is.
No, there's going to be a Town Meeting, that's why the moderator.
It's the who?
I see no reason for that.
It's like, man.
I don't see a reason for the Rules Committee either, actually, I quite frankly was wondering why we have that. Do they actually meet? When's the last time they met?
As needed.
Have they made any changes?
Actually, I think the language changed from annually to as needed.
As needed.
Well, I think it says once, at least every ten years, right, in the new, the new thing, but, uh, do we even need it?
That's the Charter Committee. That's every ten years.
Oh, okay.
And has the ship sailed on the argument that we enumerate each and every committee? Is, is that?
Um, they've added in three, uh, you know, whatever.
I mean, think, fast forward this, ten years.
The Charter, Charter Commission was in there, that's one of them.
But fast forward this ten years, when these various committees either object to purpose or need to change.
Yeah.
You've got it now so restrictive, or it's written in a way that it's so restrictive and specific, it doesn't provide any interpretation.
The Charter Committee and the Bylaw Committee just walked in the room.
Something we said.
I'm watching home for twenty minutes now.
Oh, thank you for coming in. That's gonna be the first recorded case of that ever happening. Well, you didn't come in angry, that's what mostly happened.
Usually, there's. The, the second time, I remember one time them talking about dual water rates for meters, and suddenly a hundred and twenty-five people showed up in the room, all of them with two meters. It was amazing.
So, uh, I'll ask you, Steve, one of the questions we have is, in at least two prior occasions, we've asked ourselves individually or publicly, shouldn't there be something more prescriptive about what it is the Bylaw Committee is charged with doing? Not merely that it exists, and not merely broadly describing what it does.
It certainly couldn't be much less. That's one of my frustrations, it's just sort of very open-ended.
And I'm, I personally don't believe that it should be a format for people to give their personal opinions in front of Town Meeting, which is the way it has been used.
And that, that I have asked that question of the Rules Committee.
I don't, I don't think that's an appropriate use of the bylaw committee.
A year and a half or so ago, and they were very clear about that too, they told me, as you feel.
But it, but yet, it hasn't been enforced in that manner, so.
Well, we, I, I think we've tried in the last year or two.
Yeah.
The time I've been on it, to, to be narrow, I, I so much described this sort of putting on my narrow bylaw sort of point of view on things.
Consistency issues with existing bylaws.
Yeah.
Bylaw committee members now are in the habit of saying, as a bylaw committee member, I think this, however, as a Town Meeting member, I think this, so they understand.
Yeah. But that understanding isn't, isn't embodied in this language.
No.
Like not, and I would be good if it was.
What's the sense of the board, is that?
I agree with that, that statement.
One, one of the things that I suggested to start off with is take all the appointed bodies and put them in the bylaws, and not have them in the charter.
I agree with that.
I got shot down very shortly, very quickly.
Um, yeah.
I think that makes a lot of sense.
In the spirit of recommendations, I guess that would be a general board request that they formalize at least one sentence that says what they affirmatively do.
Scope of bylaw.
Yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
You have comments on the charter?
No.
All right.
Gotta say something else, Steve, he came all the way down.
Yeah.
Talk about those dumb arguments.
I, I back up to two thirteen A. My impression of the intent of A, which isn't really changing from what was written ten years ago, maybe nineteen eighty-four, is the selectmen, I think, get extra wiggle room to get things on the warrant over and above any other boards, committees, and commissions, I think, the intent. You've got a lot of leeway with only, requiring only two of you.
Right.
But I think, I think that, that the charter, I think, is trying to treat the selectmen as special or above most of the other ordinary, sort of the, the top executives.
Right. I think we got that. The concern was that two might be misrepresented as a rule of the majority. We addressed that by describing it as two or more named members, so that it's clear that it's, we're proposing a change so that A becomes two or more named members.
Well, I imagine the entire board could take a vote to recommend or not recommend a thing later after FinCom.
We actually, we do that.
Yeah. And just because it gets on the warrant, it means you can talk about it at a town meeting. It doesn't mean the town meeting will do anything with it necessarily.
Well, I think to your point, I, I mean, you know, the more I thought about, I mean, there was a side of me that thought, we vote on everything, shouldn't we have a majority? And then I, as I began to understand what you said, that you were trying to, there were extra rights that went along with.
Or at least that's my sense personally.
No, but I, I, if you, if you really think this through, that's clearly the message. And so I, and I said at that point, and I'll say again, 'cause you're, you're talking about it, if I have a right, I don't tend to vote it away from myself.
Yeah, I heard, I heard you say that.
I mean, and so I think that by changing that, other than to say named members, I think that is appropriate, you know, clarifies, you, you don't hide behind anything. You come out and you say, this is what I'm doing, and this is why I think I'm doing it, and I have the right to do it. And on we go, as long as I, as long as I have a partner, you know.
The, the other thing, speaking as an individual, I think the, any hundred for special town meetings versus any ten for the annual or subsequent, recognizes that you are required to have an annual, so everybody has one, always. You, if you wish to, can also have a subsequent, which we do.
And we have to because.
But as, as I read it, I could be wrong. If the hundred or more requested, you were then obligated to, to generate a warrant, have a special town meeting.
No, 'cause the last clause covers that. I, I was of that belief.
Right here, for the next scheduled, so it's up to the board to schedule a special town meeting. They don't have to schedule it just because someone asks for it.
Which means you might wanna make that ten as well. By a higher burden.
I think we've covered this one.
As long as it's coming up in the next scheduled meeting.
And I asked town council, that petition that was circulated, I don't think was correct. First of all, it had the wrong date. It said January two thousand fourteen. He said that was fine. I said, they haven't even called the town meeting yet. It should've just said the next town meeting. He said, that's fine.
Well, why is it fine if it's not right?
I was surprised that he allowed a different year.
Why is it fine if it's not right?
And when is it not fine?
I mean, so we could just do anything we want?
He said, I don't know. I asked him, and I was surprised at his decision.
That, I, that really troubles me, I will tell you. I mean, the thing is in bad form.
Well, the town clerk drew it up, just to be clear. Put in the wrong year.
Well, I, I, I don't care who drew it up, but it's in bad form. As a matter of fact, I can tell you, as a citizen, I was sent out of here, out of this room, from that chair, over bad form.
Yeah. It all depends on who's making the roll down the form.
So simplify it, I think maybe change C to voters of annual, subsequent, or special town meeting, period.
Yeah.
And then take D.
And then take D, strike D.
And strike D. Everybody's happy?
Yeah, if, if everybody, if everyone feels that, that's, that's what they want, definitely the way to do it.
Back to a warrant that's going into town, into the special town meeting. Why is that, why is that gonna go in bad form?
'Cause town council said it's not in bad.
I think you need to take that one up later, directly with town council.
Is form, is form determined exclusively by the town council, or does the board of selectmen petition?
And the execution of any of these duties? It's determined by the town clerk and town council.
Are they both there, really?
I don't know if the town clerk even knows. I didn't mention it.
She knows.
Okay. As I say, I was a little surprised. I thought it had to be precisely, exactly.
That's what I thought.
That has been the direction of this board at other times.
And the reason, and by the way, we all agonize through this referendum petition